Dilegence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I need someone to make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'm going to adopt the agenda.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Powers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Do we have any citizens' comments?
Yes, sir.
No citizens' comments, and Business and Sports Services, Kenny Walker. And I'm sorry, I didn't turn my mic on. If we can, I'll do that.
Good morning, Mr. Berkoff.
Good morning, Mr. Kennedy, members of the board, Superintendent Himmel. I'm here to request approving award of bid two thousand fourteen dash seventeen, Crystal River High School gym floor electric service relocate to Daley and Zilch Incorporated.
Board members, any comments, questions?
They're going to be the floor and the electrical? Is it a general contractor?
Yes.
That's good to say. He's a multi-talented floor guy.
And this is just the, it's for both, right, the floor and the electric?
Yes, yes. Package deal.
And when, when, when will this take place?
During the summer. That's, we're coming to you now to be able to get an earlier start on ordering materials.
And Mr. Berkoff, we're going to be moving that monstrosity electric panel out of the entrance as you come in there into the gym?
Yes, and building a new electric room in the current lobby.
Mr. Berkoff, where is Daley and Zilch located?
Right down the street on forty-four, kind of opposite the sheriff's vehicle maintenance facility.
They're local?
Yeah.
Do we know them?
Yeah. They bid on a lot of work that we've had, yes.
Yeah, yes. They've been around a number of years here. Any more comments? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, we, oh, thank you. I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Deutschman, that we approve and award the bid, oh, the bid two thousand fourteen dash seventeen, Crystal River High School gym floor electric service relocate of Daley and Zilch. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Human Resources.
Good morning. I would like to request the board's approval of the instructional support recommendations.
Yeah, we, we, there's a name on here that, yeah, Ms., I was going to say, Ms. Deutschman, you've been here longer, so I'm going to let you go ahead and...
Go ahead.
We're going to have line item veto on these. So, Ms. Audrey, who, if she is watching, and she's probably tearing up again when I went down there earlier this morning, and...
I can't remember who I was talking to the other day, but they said Audrey Haynes is so awesome and so helpful and so wonderful. And then to see her name on here, I feel so bad.
We have that wellness center that services so many people that this board was so forward-thinking to do, and Audrey has been certainly a center of continuing that success there.
So, Mrs. Himmel, is that going to be a post-division?
Yes. If that we post it out?
It is posted. It's probably going to close this week.
I see Sandy Cross is on there. I think hiring, I know she said this year was her last year doing the veterans at the school.
Ms. Snyder at Citrus Springs Middle School, longtime reading teacher, famous for doing the geese that comes here, and also, if you've ever been a student in her class, she's really good at candy bar giving, so she gives the whole ones, not just the little mini ones either. David Solory, been here from Crystal River on to La Canto. It's that time of year again, isn't it?
I like this. Oh, I should be on here.
No, I, I can, as Chera can stop that at least. Okay, then we need a sad motion. And I'll second it, so that those two have to don't, they can totally take away from it. So, I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Mr. Kennedy to accept and approve the instructional and support recommendations with regret.
We don't accept them, we'll just approve them.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Motion sadly carries four zero.
Thank you.
Ed Services, Mr. Clotter, good morning, sir.
Good morning, members of the school board, Superintendent Mrs. Himmel, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Mullen. I was thinking Mr. Simon was going to be coming through the... It is FCAT rights today, yes, ma'am, it is.
Mr. Clotter, are they also testing some new tests or something in some of the schools on the rights, or are they piloting anything? Not this, okay.
There are two actual items on the agenda that were actually pulled back last meeting, and one, the first one, is the Performance Matters renewal contract that we're entering into. This is actually a contract that we set up with Performance Matters, and it is renewed each year, and it is paid through our Laurel grant, which is a Title VI federal grant.
This looks like three years.
It's a, it's a three-year, yes, ma'am. We actually just redid the contract. Mr. Ratchell had reviewed that and have worked through the contract with him.
I have a question, Mr. Clotter. In here talks about trade secret, like on page two, third line on top, or does it have a trade, a trade secret? What is that? What does that mean?
It's a computer program. It's all the confidential information and trade secrets that go into developing the computer programs. In case we get a public records request, simply turn over the computer program to someone. They've already designated it as a trade secret, and what that says is that we will notify them of that, and then they can go out and defend whether or not that is a trade secret or not, and have to go to court and determine if it is. If it is, then no one has to turn it over. But that's what that's about.
Any other discussion? I might just need a motion. I have a motion by Ms. Deutschman, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the hosting service agreement between Performance Matters and the Citrus County School Board for the period of March fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, through March fourteenth, two thousand seventeen. Any last discussions? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries four zero.
Next item, next item on the agenda is to approve the purchase of expanded services from Performance Matters. What we are looking at doing as we evolve into the assessment area is to actually provide an opportunity to do our assessments on the online. We basically use clickers now as a formative assessment, but this would actually provide us with an avenue in order to be able to provide a venue for us to deliver those assessments on a computer base, which would help and again prepare align themselves with a computer-based assessment that the state will be providing.
Are you saying in place of the clickers or in addition to the clickers?
Well, we're going to be transitioning, ma'am, into that. We did, again. Those would not go along the wayside. They would still actually be utilized in the classrooms. I believe so, yes, ma'am. What is, what is the, they don't have the formative assessments. They have an industry certification. There's not really an assessment like that.
All right, so now we're reading that our good Senator John Legge is proposing that we not test in our schools because it's too much testing. It's our fault, our fault.
Where does it come up with this stuff?
Too much, those darn tests. The FCAT's good, important, because it delivers all the information we need to know of the goods on the teachers, but our testing is of no good, so if we are forbidden from assessing our students within a few weeks of the FCAT, is this something that we, this is what intended for or not? Or is this all year long?
Again, this would be an ongoing assessment. So, to answer your question, we were responding to issues of FCAT writings, I apologize for my delay. You referred to, I believe, Senator eight fifty-two, which addresses the, and again, I, Mr. Kennedy reminds me, sometimes bills are just bills. They may have value, they may not, but this one states there can be no testing by a district in areas other than FCAT EOC that have high stakes on teacher evaluation two weeks before the FCAT test window and two weeks after it. So that would mean that a teacher, if I were a culinary arts teacher, I'd be administering my final exam according to this bill the second week of March or the second week of June. So, whenever, the second week of June. So, the, the bill is designed to protect statewide testing and define when, and of course, tests that would be used that are linked to teacher evaluation. Again, we've responded as assessment collaborative teams across the state of Florida with the, there's not a whole lot of logic and common sense to this, however, we're not sure what happens as it proceeds through.
Well, this is a very powerful senator, and I believe that he's chairman of the education committee, okay, I think. He owns a private charter school in Pasco County, and he always presents bills that tend to not be in favor of the interest of public education because I don't think there's, I would hate to think that this is an ulterior motive in making our children less prepared for testing, and then therefore they won't do as well. And I certainly hope that's not the case.
When one examines carefully the details of that bill and how that would unfold, it's clear that it would not serve well any student or any teacher in the state of Florida, other than protecting, of course, which is nice that there's an interest to protect the test window.
Well, the interest is to put the blame on the schools, that we're the ones that are overtesting those kids. It's not the FCAT's fault. Everybody knows that. It's a perfect test. It's all of us. We just can't stop ourselves from testing our children. And that, and you know, and unfortunately, the people who are the voters out there who don't have children in the school system, they only believe what they read in the paper or what is being put out there. And this says that we are, again, are at fault. We don't know how to teach kids. And it's extreme micromanaging from legislation.
So, with past legislation, there's no question that there will be additional assessment. And the second request that we have at Performance Matters on extending the service that we have with them includes online assessment, digital testing. So while we have not clearly launched a detailed plan, because we, at this time, we still do not know what tests will be administered next year by the state of Florida, we have put in place the request with Performance Matters and the tool to be used for digital assessment. And that digital assessment, at this point, is probably one of the few assessments that can be done on iPad tools, while the, the, some of the built-in devices may not be exact as they should be, rulers, calculators, those tools can be added to a student who is using a device. But the intent is, not knowing what the future portends, but knowing that we will be administering, and you heard me say, seven hundred sixty-eight assessments almost simultaneously, and that the ability to do that in one platform would be close to impossible, so there will be some structure blending paper base with computer, so, and in, as well as that online assessment we can use for formative. So, right now, schools are using clicker tool. They could also use devices such as iPads or computer workstations or labs or, or...
BYMD, bring your own, bring your own device.
Ultimately, ultimately. So that's that part.
Is there any limitation to how many tests we can actually do with this dollar per student contract?
No.
So we could, we could actually, who writes the questions? Are we writing the questions and we're putting them on a Performance Matters format? And then explores them for us?
Right now, we write the questions. We also purchase questions. And if you're familiar, we're a part of also a state, one of the five districts on a state pilot on an item bank test platform, which is the state's thirty-eight, and you've heard me reference thirty-eight million dollar Pearson managed tool to assist districts in a platform for administering formative, summative assessments. Now, this tool is still on pilot stage. We are administered, we have been probably the lead district in testing this, and we have discovered there are parts that work so very well and parts that don't work well. And so the question, and this platform would serve sixty-eight districts, so therefore, it does not house data. And that's important to know. It will, every year, will flush out all the data that's in there, so this can say, okay, if you want your performance or practice or formative or quizzes or tests, you must transfer it to your own data management system. Therefore, Mr. Clotter referenced the first request for sustaining Performance Matters, we must have some mechanism to store data, to compare data, to archive the previous data. Students FCAT score from third grade who's now in tenth grade.
I have a question, and it may be Mr. Clotter to be able to respond to, and that is, we've, with the idea that we've got now, and I, I think this tool is going to be an effective tool in helping us as we transition in, one of the things we continue to hear from, from staff is the more tests also that they have, but it's taken away from instructional time. Are we, and I think the answer is that, that you are, but what are we doing to review tests that we, or assessments we really may not need to necessarily continue to give, so we're not duplicating, and we're trying to pull back as much of those assessments, and I think you, you've, you've got one of my questions going, so thank you, Mr. Clotter.
Yeah, in Ed Services, we're constantly having this conversation, and this conversation actually stems from about work that we did nine years ago in regards to mapping and a guaranteed viable curriculum. And then that's really where these assessments started coming, so that we actually could then identify, okay, the mastery of those standards that the students have. And we basically talked back about philosophy, about whether we hold the teachers accountable for the assessments, the students accountable. We basically separated that. We wanted our assessments that tied to those standards to really actually drive that curriculum and that instruction in the classroom. So we really actually started to deviate from that. This is where we're starting to see that actually being questioned, as far as do we then now start to have these assessments to really focus in on a multitude of reasons or ways that we're actually utilizing those. So I can just share, you know, we just have those conversations, but as you can see, we're trying to make adaptations when we get into a newer assessment, when we move from a FCAT two point O into a, I'll just say, a form of state standards assessment that we're actually going to be going. But again, and again, I understand what Mrs. Deutschman is, is sharing with us today. These are plans that are actually continually changing, and that's the thing, is what our department finds that challenging to be able to kind of stay with that consistent, or that, that change that's going on.
Because we have, you know, STAR testing in the elementary, for example.
Yes.
And then we've had FAIR testing, and of course, FAIR testing, there's a, I, I understand there's a, there's a lot of different sections, so it is not, saying FAIR test is not just saying the FAIR test, it could be different portions of that FAIR test as well. And then, of course, we've talked about our county assessment, which has been, I always forget, I apologize, summative based? Am I correct to say that, that clickers have been more summative based or formative?
Those are, those are formative.
So the idea that it's, it's driving instruction, so that it's not simply just an assessment that gives a, you know, that assess, but truly is driving what those students in front of that teacher is, which is, I think, why the board's been very supportive of that, because there's been evidence to that. But then again, do we need to continue to do FAIR? If the, if the state is allowing us not to, are we getting that information? Can we get it from another source? STAR, does that mean that we now can opt out of not needing that because we can have another tool for that?
We can address each one of them. The FAIR, again, different assessments, two different things for us. And the basically, the change that FAIR provided to us is that it provided a diagnostic for our schools to basically identify reading deficiencies and then address those. The STAR, we actually, again, I think you know the background, but for everybody's benefit, the STAR actually provided to these schools and the teachers and the media specialists an idea of where that child actually falls with their readability, and then lends itself to a program, which was the accelerated reader for the book. It has actually lapsed into our assessment for our accountability in regards to that fifty percent for the BAM. We've had a couple of conversations now. We're kind of moving into another realm to replace the STAR. And a lot of this is in the conversations that we've been having in regards to replacing that with something that's more up to date, something that we can actually have for our K one, two, three.
Because we then have leveling that's done, which is another type of assessment that, that they're doing. And then we have DIBBLES, and we've got, you know, the fluency testing. And so I guess that's the challenge that we continue to have. We, we've, it seems like we've continued to have these tests, and they are valuable resources. There isn't always consistency among the schools as to who they, certain schools seem to maybe on top of it, we've got success matters. And, you know, so those become all of this where the, the feedback is, we're testing. And some of that is not simply the state, but what can we do? And I, I have felt for Ed Services, you're, you're, you recognize that and have tried to, to say, listen, we don't want to do any more than we really, we don't want to take instructional time. But this transition time is, it's hard to let go of something, but I feel like, you know what, we've got to let go of something.
I, I will tell you, in regards to the formative assessments, when we actually started to formalize those assessments that we were doing, it actually acted as another purpose in that it provided teachers and students with the type of questioning that was actually going to take place when we went to the FCAT two point O. That was very significant, and I remember our staff actually going into the classrooms, both John, Brady, and the other folks that are, and really actually getting the idea to see right now, what is it that they're, what kind of level of questioning are those students could actually be exposed to. So it's, it, it's a multitude of, of reasons why we are providing that. And I, I think that was a pivotal point for us, going from the old standards to the next gens.
Excuse me, Ms. Powers, that's all that we can hear.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Do the people who are making the test do a readability formula on the questions, the level of difficulty of the questions they're asking?
Sure. And again, at first one, as I answer your question, Mrs. Powers, I'm going to go back and answer Mr. Kennedy's in terms of, so you asked, how will we decide what's on the plate, off the plate? I think it will take time as we move to the new Florida standards to know exactly how and when we define those formative, summatives, and which, what's the right test for students. To answer your question, Mrs. Powers, on, do we do, we, every, every item, and we've worked with a team of so very many talented people these last few weeks in looking at the new Florida standards and the questions that match that, and they are very high level. I'll give you an example without telling you the details, but a kindergarten question, the teacher will read two passages to a student, two paragraphs, two to three sentences each, and a question is, what is common to both of these stories, story one and story two? Question two, what is different between the two stories? And they give the student choices. So, the future portends that as the passages have reading levels, have content, it is far higher in analytical requests upon the student to determine and measure and compare and contrast at the earliest of grade levels, at the earliest of grade levels.
But they understand, like, for instance, I'm telling a kindergarten student to compare and contrast.
You would be shocked at some of the vocabulary that is in the kindergarten, new Florida standards passages that you would think, my goodness, I'm not sure a student really knows that, but there's content. Oftentimes, they're contextual, because understanding could be built by the, how that word fits into those two to three sentences. So, so if I can beg Mr. Kennedy, and again, I, this is with great forgiveness, and I use this analogy. So if you looked at this iPad, the way it opens, there are two parts of our assessment. There are those, and this is what the future holds, there'll be those assessments that will be formative and summative, as Mr. Clotter says, it will shape teaching, that will cause teachers to reteach, to refocus. There are those assessments that will be done to evaluate the teacher only, will have no impact on student. It will not shape or guide students. It may or may not give them a grade, may or may not. And this is what you referenced, Mrs. Deutschman, there are those, and that will be because of law. And then there are those in the middle on the binder here that may do both. So, again, it will take us time to work through it. Right now, we're working in the unknown. We do not know. We know what the standards are, but we do not know what the official assessments will be that will guide how we will construct these formative, summative tests, that will guide what we can get rid of and what we can keep.
Are you sure that the questions asked are going to be totally associated with what is to be learned?
Well, many of the questions that we have are built by the state that go through a vetting process to review to ensure that they are on grade level, that they do match the standards, and that they are designed with a depth of knowledge, because every question is ranked on a one to four in terms of the web's depth of knowledge. And then once those, those questions are pitched, administered, given to students, we then look at what's called a P score. We, we look at the test in terms of how did the student respond? And we then get a complexity to those items based on student responses. So it is a very scientific process that the state has put in place. And again, while we're doing all this, there's a shift that's occurring in what's, what are the standards? So some of those questions are being, what would be a first grade question is now a kindergarten question.
At my point, though, does somebody say that this is beyond the normal cognitive ability of a child of that age? Who can determine, how do we determine that? Is that determinable? Determinable, I like that word.
So, I'm thinking a minute about that question, because I believe that we base our standards on national information that also links to international assessments. And I know you're very familiar with those, that guide us to say, what is appropriate for kindergarten? And I, and I think to Mr. Mullen in some of his visitations to the schools, we used to expect two to three sentences from a kindergarten student.
They could write it at the end of the year.
Right, at the end of the year. Now we expect eight to ten sentences from a student. So, and then you ask, who makes that decision? And I think it's based on national studies and research that is done.
Really?
And I think that what happens too is, once we build these tools that will assess, the responses will guide us to refine or possibly shift those standards. Maybe they are too high, or maybe they are too low. So while they are coded to a specific grade level, it doesn't mean that those are chiseled into that grade level forever.
Well, the ninth grade and the tenth grade reading didn't change with the forty percent pass rate.
It, it did after twelve years.
Well, didn't they get, they
Easier.
They just lowered the cut score, that's all they did. They changed the material.
No. No and yes, no and strange, no.
Okay, so it's, I think internationally, too, if you study some of these other countries, elementary, kindergarten may not start until children are six. So they are a year older cognitively, and also those, as I've always said, those very newly, freshly minted five-year-olds are being pitted against a five, almost a six-year-old starting kindergarten if they're, based on their birthday.
And again, we could talk, Mrs. Deutschman, about all the variances, because you may have a five or six-year-old who is born prematurely, and so really, what are they? So all these issues are at hand, but we are trying our best. And I think, and Mr. Kennedy, your question begs, so are we keeping in mind what it is like on the front line for a teacher who is trying to do the right thing for students, who wants to have the right resources in their hands? Are we overburdening them or are we underserving them with the resources? And I think, I'm grateful to work with an Ed Services team, I think Mr. Clotter does a grand job of aligning us to work cohesively in various teams and departments, including our Students with Disabilities, our ESE department, our students, those students who are focused on more career technical, trying to get us all together, because, you know, we have to serve all students, and from the most gifted to the most delayed. So we really have to align ourselves well. And I think that's what the plan is.
And I think that that balance is extremely important. I think it helps for the teachers to know when we're articulating this new assessment, that it is by no means trying to continue the pile on, but will be part of saying, as we're doing this, we recognize we're going to be needing to take some things off at the same time. Because I think, you know, on the front lines, you just sometimes see the war happening and not necessarily get to always know that there is light that we hope is coming. And you're right, because the summative, we don't know what we're dealing with. And at the same time, we still have to serve students. And I think that's where our teachers are at. So that balance, and I really know that that's where, you know, the executive team and Education Services has been looking to say, we recognize that there will be things at sunset, there'll be things that we, you know, enhance, but it's a transition, and I really just want the public to understand that, so.
The challenge is, in this first year of this shift, it's such a short time.
Oh.
It will be from March to when we move into the end of, and again, there isn't much time now, because we're so, today begins, but FCAP writing, and we do not end till the end of May, the last day of school. So how do you transition and shift teachers and their understanding of those standards that two weeks ago changed, and then assessments that we don't know yet? So I think the hard part this year is there's such little time to prepare and empower teachers.
And the commercial to the legislators, again, needs to be, they need to suspend the BAM so that we can have these transitions take place without our teachers feeling these inequities, so.
Let me ask one more question I made. It used to be a big issue about culture-free test. What is the consideration now with testing that's going on? For instance, say in the past, someone would say, well, the children didn't do well because they were from, or did well because they're from the Northeast, and these children from the Plains have not had the experience of the big city. You know, a lot of cultural things came to play. What's happening with the new test?
So we're still making those mistakes, Mrs. Powers. And I bring back, bring back a few years ago, the writing prompt seems appropriate on this anniversary date, it was about camels.
Oh, yeah.
So you get a cultural, or otherwise known, Mrs. Deutschman, we joke, camels. A child interpreted as, what are camels? So we will continue to make, I believe, those errors, cultural errors, because we are getting more culturally diverse, particularly in the state of Florida. There is great effort put forth. One of the vetting processes on this Item Bank test platform is an analytical team that looks for cultural bias. So, and sometimes that isn't identified until after that item is presented into some test format. When it becomes high-stakes test format, the key part would be extracting that item so that it doesn't come forward against a student. So, and sometimes that happens and sometimes it doesn't. But I will assure you that I know from our involvement that there is identification of recognition and examination of items, questions, choice responses, does it have cultural bias or influence on the student's ability to respond?
While we're starting testing mode, and then we looked at our disaggregated data and looked at our demographics, I was reading an article this weekend about a group of Indian students from India in Hillsborough County, in the growing population, they were referred to as Indian-Americans. And then we have American Indians. And we saw in our demographics that kind of uptick in American Indians, even though we probably expect that they were really Indian-Americans. So I'm wondering if we can help teachers, help students, make sure they identify themselves correctly?
They're allowed to say anything they want to.
Well, I know that, but I mean, I think it's confusing now that that term has now become
Thank you, Mrs. Powers.
Indian-American instead of American, I mean, I, it's confusing.
I believe, and I could be wrong, but I believe our Indian students, not American Indians, are classified into this federal structure as Asian, so.
Do they know that?
Yes, because when they fill out, they're guided in each schools, typically that classification is when students enter school in kindergarten, pre-kindergarten, or when parents register. So most schools are very good in guiding. What is happening right now, we're noticing are, and it's factual and real that students are multicultural, they are coded as multiple ethnicities, so that's probably what is happening more often than not.
But I think it's kind of thrown on some of our data.
Again, small numbers we have.
Well, it was a couple of hundred, if I recall, last year, were reported as American.
American Indian.
Yeah.
Then one year we had next to none, so.
Yeah, so as I'm saying, there's some misunderstanding of that terminology, or maybe the way it's coded on the test.
So these rules, and again, I don't want to delay this, I mean, Mrs. Deutschman, but remember, like, if you are Hispanic, it trumps all, you cannot be multicultural. You are Hispanic, Hispanic. Even though you may be Hispanic and American Indian, Hispanic trumps all. So there are some rules about demographics that, and while we try to look at demographic data, and I think schools are pretty good about it, in knowing how those groups and serving them well.
Well, it's the kids, though. It's the kids.
That's right. The children just sort of play, obviously, a joke, but it has lots of using to report.
Yeah.
That's something other than what they filled in the last time, and because you cannot say, no, you're really not that, you needed, you can't do that, so they're allowed to.
Well, just as a, an interesting note to that, there was approximately five medals that were run at the Olympics for the Russian team, purely because they accepted randomly people from around the world as Russian citizens, and they made them Russian citizens right before the Olympics.
This is for the edge or something.
So, I mean, we even had, there was an American snowboarder that won gold.
Well, there was an
But he's really Russian, yeah.
A guy that, or NHL, was on the Russian hockey team.
Yeah.
Also a guy from the AHL was on the Indian hockey team.
We don't talk about that.
And all this confusion extends to ones taking away naps.
That's
Hey!
And with that, if I can consider an emotion, the chair will consider an emotion on this.
I move to approve expanded services from Performance Matters.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the purchase of expanded services from Performance Matters. I would just note that in the executive summary, there was a typographical error that says from 1014 to 15 school year, if this board just acknowledges that that was intended to be 2014 through 2015.
Oh.
I'm going to go back and correct.
That's okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 4-0. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Simon. And I believe we are now on to WTI.
Good morning. It's my pleasure to be here representing WTI in relation to the agreement between the Citrus County School Board and the Corrections Corporation of America of Tennessee to provide GED instruction.
I'll go ahead and move to approve, then we can have discussion. Move to approve the amendment to the agreement for Citrus County School Board with the Luchitec Institute and the Corrections Corporation of America of Tennessee LLC to provide GED instruction.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Deutschman, to approve an amendment to the agreement between Citrus County School Board with La Coochie Technical Institute and the Corrections Corporation of America of Tennessee LLC to provide GED instruction. And do we have any questions?
This is the regular jail, this isn't the juvenile detention facility. No, ma'am, it's the regular. So we're providing GED instruction at the jail? Yes, ma'am. And who goes and does that? Mrs. Schontz, she's a teacher that teaches at Forest Ridge Elementary, she goes there two nights a week.
Who's the, the people from the Virgin Islands, on what level are we talking about?
As far as their level in relation to academics? Oh, there are some pretty severe people that she deals with, some pretty felony convictions. She feels very safe going there, she, she's actually, I've had, she's had great success, and I think we are very fortunate to have her, and she works very well with the jail. Every time I speak to the warden or the other personnel out there, they're very pleased with her performance, as we are.
Any other questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 4-0. Thank you, Ms. Timmer.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Willis, as we hope, at least I do, and I know you do, that we have legislation that allows for an appropriate expansion of the name to incorporate the services that you do.
Yes.
Please, I think as a board, we would love to come to a sign unveiling to be able to
Absolutely.
Undo that, and I look forward to that session.
Well, that would probably be, I would think, a board decision.
We would have that.
Well, as a technical college.
You know, Denise, I was just reading an article, there were in Time Magazine last week, they had a very extensive article about six-year high schools, but actually it was a vocational and a more, and also associate degree opportunities for students, but they were still enrolled as high school students, so part of that was a funding issue. But I think some of their schools were called technical and professional. That was really a nice little polish to that name, really upped it, so I was thinking maybe we could work on that.
I'm sure there'll be a committee.
Tell them technical and professional is, is very
With La Coochie.
Should they start?
Ms. Willis, do you have that bill yet number?
Yes, I believe it's
Or you know what?
Seventy-five.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I'll get it, too.
I was going to say, if you would email it to us, because I certainly would like to send a letter in support of that.
I would do that. I'll send it out.
Thank you, Ms. Willis.
Thank you.
And you should, oh, I'll look up that article. The cover had a student with a
What magazine?
Time Magazine, but I think this, I think the cover was different in the grocery stores, because they can see it again. They had hired, and they talked about these large corporations that were locating in areas where they had a technical school, and then those students were specifically trained for that industry and guaranteed a job when they got out. IBM was one of them, one of these areas that they located to, was inner-city Chicago. They had a very high success rate by pairing specific industries with a training program and guaranteeing jobs at the end of the line.
One of the things that I'm proud to say is that the EEC is now really involving me when they have potential business moving to the county, so that I'm at the table, offering services, what can, where are our students being trained in, what training can I provide?
Okay.
So it's really
Interesting.
Thank you, Ms. Willis. Attorney legal matters. Okay, I'm sorry, I wanted to just check in case you
Okay. I was just going to
Yeah, I was just going to say, let me just go down, even though it's not here, I was just going to ask if there's anything that each of you had that we could do. Mr. Mullin, did you have anything for us?
Just a reminder, Friday is the kids' parade.
I will be there.
Eight hundred runners.
Wow, oh my gosh.
That's just phenomenal.
How many are they got, Ryan? They've been running all year long, logging their miles, and then they do the last 1.2 miles if they're 26.2.
How many is Marsha Green?
She said she has like 60 or something.
Oh my gosh. Ms. Bryant?
I'm good.
And Ms. Powers, I know you had some.
Well, I had a couple of items, one that came from the community, and it was suggested by some of the community leaders that after our presentation with Mr. Fitzpatrick, that perhaps the Citrus High School stadium could be named, football stadium, after Mr. Fitzpatrick. And I immediately thought, Ms. Deutschman, because she has been involved a lot with honoring Mr. Fitzpatrick, and so I wanted to
I think he should be named for the school board, I think he should be over the top of the tour, right? Instead of the football stadium. He went to school there, and his son played football there, but this is where he did his work.
Yeah, I understand. And they were saying that since the Fitzpatrick family was so much intertwined with the sports at the high school, that maybe we talk about that in the future, the possibility of naming the stadium, and it makes a difference.
Ms. Powers talked to me about that yesterday, that the board has always given that project when they want to name a field or something back at the school.
Right, and that's where we go, that is
Well, the reason why, and we had talked about this a number of years ago, about naming the meeting room, dedicating it to him, is we had, at the TRC, what was that called for a long time?
John Henry.
Yeah, and so I, so it's not inappropriate that we would name a school board meeting room after the Spike Fitzpatrick, Richard Fitzpatrick, school board meeting room.
And we do have other, Coach Dabney has, I think, a room at Crystal River High, is there not? Somewhere that I thought, at the school, there's something that's named after him.
There's a lineman on the field, the Crystal River High School.
Oh, that was
That was, then he was a coach.
Yeah, that's for
He was Coach Beukery, and then Grant Field, because he coached at Crystal River High School, and then Citrus High softball, Chris Vicki, I mean, because of all pro conferences.
And I think Mike Camden's also got
Right. Right.
Mike Camden Field.
But I would, I would not have any qualms at the time, you know, naming this Spike Fitzpatrick meeting room. Not the whole building, just
And it's, I know we can't take action on it today, but is that something you'd like to see put on the agenda?
Well, I would like
Or would you like to have
The request that you came about the football field.
Okay, that's on our call, that's the school's
That's the school's call, so that would be something, then, if you want to direct the school, then to come up with a
Bring it up to the thing. Yes.
Oh, is it?
Yes, I'll, and I'll discuss it with them. But I think, you know, that's quite an honor to have that. The second thing, we're going to have some students, right, and we started a little program, I think, Ms. Timmer, you're going to have, I think, Friday, the teacher, it's going to be, what do you call it, aunt, I'm losing the name, that one of the teachers has taught a very, very long period of time as it comes to some of the meetings, retired, she's like 100 years old, she's like
Actually, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes. Erin and I on Thursday
Is it Thursday?
And Ethel's coming.
That's
And I know that it's a 20-minute conversation for them, but it'll be a two-hour conversation, because she wants to give me all the history of Citrus County schools. And we're trying to get a student there also.
Right, and I'd ask you about a student going, because we'd sort of like to see something in the newspaper on a continuing basis, where our students go and find out something about the county, about the people in the county, and about our history, because it's so very important. And sometimes we don't have time and a schedule to look at it, but I think if a student, if a student each time was included in something like this, they could write a piece for the paper, and I've already discussed that with the board, talking about a little bit of their history and personal history of Citrus County, and it'll educate us all to appreciate what we have, because, you know, sometimes all of us fail to appreciate the place we are, we always think there's a, the grass is greener over there, and sometimes it's not at all. So a student will be there, and I'd like to get up with you about that, make sure we have a student there to write something for the Chronicle.
The journalists
That could reflect us. Yeah, something.
And Marsha, with La Canto High School, about another media avenue for students to write, that we're going to have to get PR from the same companies.
And I know that the papers talked before about, you know, if we had journalists for the sports, the various sporting events, particularly the smaller ones that the sports, the various sporting events, particularly the smaller ones, that they would love to have an opportunity to be able to cover that stuff, because they just don't have that staff to do that.
Oh, that's great. You too. Aunt Eth is 102. 102, is she 102? 102, January 7th.
And she's at church regularly. I can tell. She...
And she's coming here. I'll figure that.
And she's as spunky now, I mean, as spunky now as ever, so...
And she gave a gala and gave a speech the last time she was at an event, and said that, I thought she was 100 when she said...
She's 102, January 7th.
And she does public speaking, and that is absolutely incredible. She's a sharp lady, so I appreciate that. The, just a third thing I want to throw out for a mass to be in the future meeting, is we have a little increase in absentees in the county, and I'd like to revisit the social worker issue about, maybe looking about getting another social worker to help us with that. And that's all I have.
Ms. Hemel's got that written down. Ms. Deutschman?
Yes, I met yesterday with Josh Wooton of the Chamber Commerce, and Doug LeBel and Eloy Nunez of Rotary Club, when we put our final coordination efforts together for the Golden Citrus Scholar Award Program. It's gonna be April 24th. It's a little early this year, because we had a hard time nailing down the room at CFC. Apparently it's become very popular.
It is.
So next year, hopefully, we'll have it back like May 1st or 2nd. So the Chamber is accepted full responsibility for putting on the event and raising the money to put the event on, and Rotary has accepted the responsibility of raising funds for, we're not gonna call them scholarships, we're gonna call them Scholar Awards. And so far, they raised maybe $4,000 or $5,000. The goal the first year was to raise at least $5,000. My goal is to have $30,000, which they wanna look at, maybe trying to get that next year. We typically have donated, each of us have donated $100, and this year, if we do that collectively, we will donate directly to the Scholar Award that will go directly to the students, it won't go to pay for the program. So it's really related to the kids. So if you, I'll find out how we make out a check, and if you would consider doing that, I'll pick those up at our meeting in the beginning of March.
Think last year, didn't we do it as a whole board?
Yeah, we, I think, yeah. Because then it was a sponsor level, because they were looking for money for the actual program. It's not that they've already got that covered, so this is gonna be just in the Scholar Award.
Okay.
So we can still do that as a board. So I was really, I was really very grateful that we have people out there who are, who understand the importance of this recognition and are figuring out the ball and run with it. The second thing is, we had the foreign exchange students that had come to see us, and they were very enlightening, and I was wondering if we could arrange to have a roundtable discussion with them, maybe in May, because they're very busy. They're going to Hawaii, and they're going to New York, and they're going to all these places. But they're free May, and they're going back to their home countries in either June or July. And Mr. LeBel was telling me last year, I think, Mrs. Hemel, we had a student from Denmark that you spoke to, and when you got done talking to him, you started calling people in, saying, "You gotta listen to this kid." So I was thinking, if we could do this, school board, superintendent, your staff, our, you know, ed services people, it might be a great, you know, kind of a more relaxed atmospheric conversation to pick their brains. I think it would be like a workshop.
Why don't we do it, because we don't typically have a workshop in May, why don't we do it before our regular meeting in May and do it like at 12:30 or something?
They're at school.
Oh, they're at school.
They're students.
I don't have a problem staying late and sitting with them.
Yeah. Or just scheduling an additional day. I don't know, I don't have the calendar in front of me.
We just, yeah, or we can schedule an afternoon and just, we can notice it, and we can do it upstairs.
Yeah.
So many of those students too, that who are gonna write the paper, be there. I've not chosen yet.
Oh, okay. So, Mr. Chairman, can you take care of that?
Yes, I will, and I'll, between Ms. Robert and I, we'll look at the calendar and we'll, why don't we, is there, does anyone have a problem maybe doing it on a Thursday then or something like that? And we'll, we'll pick a day and we'll notice it.
And then just coordinate with...
Mr. Chairman, and make sure that we've legalized it, and then we'll do it.
Doug LeBel, because he's the one who coordinates all the stuff.
Absolutely. We'll get it done.
And Gary Vitter's got a couple who did not come to the Rotary Exchange. Oh, really? Okay. Yeah, we invite everyone then.
We'll do it.
Wonderful.
I was just thinking, do you mind videotaping?
Would you do that too?
Oh, speaking of, glad you reminded me. Ms. Hemel, can we ask Mr. Gangler to videotape the Golden Citrus Award, because we're trying to put together, you know, some marketing materials to help the people in the community who have not attended and to understand what that program's all about, maybe ask a little snippets of some of the...
Doug works with also the Keys Center. I wonder if they...
They might do it live.
I was gonna say, I wonder about them doing it live?
Oh, I see.
Because Doug's the one that, he's, he's the in there, yeah. That's, I mean, I was just thinking to bring it to another level.
Yeah, that's... I see Stan Dennis once a month.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, thank you.
At the very worst, we can have Chris.
Yeah. But Nancy...
He might do it anyway.
He might do it anyway.
Yeah.
Web site.
Yeah.
All right, that was it.
And the only thing I have is just, is the calendar of events for us, is that helping? Is that, you know, I've been trying to add, and then I've been noting, you know, if I've added something or updated something that I just kind of wanted you to have, and feel free to just email me if there's something you want to add to it. But I just, you know, what is amazing to me, and that's, I know, not even representative of our individual activities, there's a lot there.
There is a lot, and, you know, and I've said this for many years, people just make the assumption that we read our emails about every 10 minutes, and that we live in the building, so they're always available to do something, or we know that this is building 100, I'm sorry, but I still feel bad about missing that opportunity, because I did know we're building 100, I thought it was WTI, because what was reported, I had building 100, 200, 300. So I really appreciate your effort.
My pleasure. My pleasure. With that, we will adjourn. If there's nothing else that this board needs, we will adjourn this special meeting, and we will open up our workshop, and let's see if we can get some stuff done.
Dixon.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes. Good morning, everyone. We only have one policy update this morning. This is a request to review the revision of Policy 3.40, Safe and Secure Schools. The revision adds Section 3 Emergency Response Agency, identifies the Citrus County Sheriff's Office as the Emergency Response Agency, responsible for notifying the school district of emergencies and types of emergencies. And it adds Section 4C concerning safety emergency plans. On page 1 of 3, these were just some changes that were provided by Mr. Bradshaw. And on page 2 of 3, that's where we've added the Emergency Response Agency, being the Citrus County Sheriff's Office, and the type of emergency. Emergencies including but not limited to fires, natural disasters, and bomb threats. And then down below, new Section C has been added, and these are all pursuant to updates in Florida statutes, specifically 1.006, 07. And Ms. Cernich is here, if you have any questions more specific.
Board members, any comment, direction, feedback? Let's see, could that work good? And I believe records retention.
I want to say thank you for emailing that. I was able to read this early. Thank you.
Once again, good morning, board members. After the last board meeting in regards to the discussion about records retention, we were asked to come back to you with some information regarding our practices in the records retention. So at the conclusion of the meeting, we actually had a meeting in the, one other building upstairs, with the people that are connected with the records retention, and that meeting actually took place on February 11th, 2014. One of the things that we actually had once again reviewed was our GS7 federal requirements, and then actually looked at what we were currently doing and roles and responsibilities, and what is our current practice. Now, we basically wanted to share with you information today in a formal version, if you will, the information that we actually talked about. Today, I have provided a PowerPoint, and that PowerPoint is basically going to be shared with you by different individuals that are connected to our records retention. Mrs. Alagretta, as you know, basically her department, and now Mrs. Humba oversees our student records handbook, where a lot of information is actually, and she does an admirable job at coordinating with all the schools, proper documentation and records retention. She will be sharing with you basically that Category A and Category B, and what the duration that we are holding on to that material. Mrs. Humba is gonna come and share with you, one of the questions that was asked at the board meeting is, what's actually the status of what the requests are that we actually receive? And so she's got some information to share with you that she's discovered. Then Mrs. Haynes, who was, as you recall, part of our conversation in regards to the exceptional student education, is gonna give you the reality about retaining their records and what actually composed of that, and what the duration is of that. Then if you recall, part of the questions that actually said, what electronically do we actually warehouse and store? And so Mr. Chamberlain from the Information Services Department will be addressing that with you. And then Dr. Gaddis, towards the end, well, I think that was the conversation towards the end of your meeting, was really, where do electronic communications, email, fall into our records retention? He's gonna share some information from a GS1 document. One that is, another member of our team that is not gonna be sharing with you today, but is available, is Sherri Cernich, Director of Risk Management. She is actually the one who oversees and facilitates the actual disposal of those records, so if you have any questions for her as well. So again, our purpose in coming to you today is to provide a cohesive presentation on what the records are, how long we actually are holding on to them. And then I turn it over to your, our board attorney, to basically make that advice, or, you know, just to share information legally with you. And then again, is it the board's decision to actually propose a change in any of these practices?
Okay.
So I'm gonna turn it over to our first person in the area of retaining records, and that's Mrs. Alagretta.
Thank you, Mr. Claudio. Good morning again, board members, superintendent, assistant superintendent, and school board attorney, Mr. Bradshaw. We had some conversation last time about permanent records, Category A, and I just wanted to, once again, so that we're all on the same page and have that common understanding, just review for you what is permanent information and information that we keep indefinitely. The areas of student permanent records are personally identifiable information, the name of the last school attended, their attendance history, grades and classes they participated in, date of graduation or completion, the social security number of the adult students, student transcripts. And all of this information that is permanent information is found on their final transcript The other category, which is temporary information, is classified as Category B information. Health information, family background data, standardized test scores, academic improvement plans, progress monitoring plans, educational and career plans. Those are considered temporary, and they stay with the student per the GS7 for three school years, provided any applicable audits have been released. Currently, Citrus County School Board practices to keep them five years after graduation, so we go a little bit above and beyond with the temporary information. If there's no questions, I'll turn it over to Ms. Humba.
I just realized, with standardized test scores, that's...
Yeah, I was surprised on that.
Yeah, but we're so big on, state is so big on having the tests done, so it doesn't seem logical to throw out the test scores. It's supposed to be a file. There's a disconnect there.
Well, we do keep them, and then it is, the SAT and the ACT reports are on their transcript.
How is this information kept? Are there individual papers in folders?
Yes, that's a good question, and I'll answer that. Every student has something called a queue folder, a cumulative folder. Once they register into Citrus County schools, that folder is started, and every year, information is kept in that queue, and it moves with that student, whether they transferred in county to another school, or the mass transfer of their records from 5th to 6th grade and 8th to 9th grade. Specific information, like what's in Category B, health information, test scores, AIPs, et cetera, they are in individual colored folders, so that schools, counselors, or administrators, or those that need to, can immediately grab that folder and know if a student's on an AIP, if they're on a PMP, if they need health information. So those are all kept in their queue and very well protected by the guidance department.
And they're kept in their school base?
Yes, ma'am.
So somebody's always filing those papers in those queue folders?
Yes, that's restricted to certain personnel.
Okay, have we not changed to electronic folders, stents, and then only sitting there filing paper files?
That has been a conversation. We have not got to that level yet.
What would it take?
We would have to start somewhere. I don't know the effectiveness of going backwards and starting to scan those, but it would start at the very beginning with electronic process of registering students, and then scanning everything, and possibly putting on a disk or on a server.
I thought we were doing that.
We are scanning records of students, or we did, of students who had graduated already, but at this time, current students, like a 3rd grader, they have the paper copies.
When will they be scanned? When would they be scanned? You say you scan the previous grade, how about the 3rd grader?
We would not scan their material, because everything that's considered permanent information is already on, is electronically on their transcript copy through terms.
So it's just a duplicate, and the papers portion is just a duplicate?
It's a duplicate for the permanent file, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to address, I think this question is gonna come up in regards to that scanning, because when we start talking about that, again, we're basically, that queue folder, again, I share that document, and I think that this is actually that process in which we actually go through that whole record, student records, that actually, Regina actually facilitates. But that's that question about electronic and scanning. When we talk about some of those today, again, that would be, again, a role, you know that the guidance departments go through this every, at the end of every year, and basically what they actually are making that transition from 5th to 6th and 8th to 9th, as far as what actually stays in that queue folder.
And I would beg the question, if we have amount of man-hours going into that process, why, what would be the disadvantage, or what is the, you know, why wouldn't we be digitizing it and transitioning that?
I can, I can just say that we basically, that that's a process that we're constantly working on during the school year in regards to a hard copy that provides that.
And just to clarify, the man-hours really don't accumulate until the high school level, when the student is at that point and they are graduating. For example, 5th grade school, 5th grade, elementary school, 5th grade students are moving to 6th grade. That guidance counselor would go through those 5th grades... That guidance counselor would go through those fifth grade students' CUEMs, and at that time, remember, it still stays with that student, so nothing at that time is shredded. Information is put in the correct order, so that then when the receiving school receives it, they know the order to look for specific things. So the man-hours really don't generate until high school, when they have to pull that information to shred, that's not category B or A.
So at this point, you're still saying, well, then, having the hard copy is more advantageous?
It depends at what point. Depends on the situation. You and I both know there's some people who like to have that hard copy and look at. Is it something that people, people could change and get used to? Possibly. It's that initial beginning to start it. We have to start sometime, we just haven't looked at the process to do that. Let's say we started this school year, 2014, 2015, we would still have hard copies of the CUEM for the next 11 years, but we would begin the process of everything being electronic. And then if a student was to go to another district or another county and they wanted records, we would either scan it on a disk for them and mail it to them. Not sure how we would do that. So conversation has begun on that, we just haven't worked out the details and...
And then there's still the issue of the management system that has to manage all of that to make it easy for the schools to be able to look through that information and for that to be archived and stored, and I'm sure there's vendors that do that, and I don't know if there's plugins within our systems.
And there's several, several different hands that touch those. It could be the nurse for the health information, it could be the screening team when they do the screenings for the students, it could be a guidance person when they're looking for possibly custody papers, could be information for the PST team when they're meeting to look at academic or social needs of the students. So several people continue to touch that file, they would need access to that electronically.
Are the custody papers kept? Which group do they follow?
They follow them through till high school.
And then...
They are not in the GS7. Guidance counselors just know the importance of them, so they are in a separate folder in their CUEM folder.
And that, and they're considered temporary?
They would feel relevant once they turn 18 or graduate.
Uh huh. Yes, ma'am.
I get, I get the feeling that the rules are made to be sure that no one is now responsible for some information that might get out, that maybe people wouldn't want out. It seems not as much a filing system as a system that is looking with one eye at legality in terms of being sued. Because some of the things that, on the temporary, you'd think to help the students, such as the standardized tests, such as improvement plans, would be something that would be kept for the future. And I think all of us who've gone to graduate school, you know you always write back to your college, sometimes you have to go back farther than that and ask for your records. Now, I don't care if you're entering graduate school at 22 or entering at 42, you still have to have those records, so you still have to depend on the college sending it to the school you're applying to. They don't just give you a free pass on that. So I'm thinking about that in terms of the kids in high school and the future, but I just don't see destroying records of the...
I don't think it's more for legality purposes like that, although some of it, because a lot of times the record retention is longer than statute of limitations, that would run on that. But I think because government in and of itself is governed by the public records laws, and then makes you maintain public records for a certain period of time, that's your volume of records that governments have to keep and maintain and store and keep, is why they created the record retention schedule, so that at certain point in time, those records become obsolete, that are no longer...
Valued.
They're no longer valued. And so, and especially, you know, and there's all kinds of GS documents that govern different entities, but this one is specifically for school districts, and that's what, you know, they cited as far as a permanent record, as far as student records, you know, records that can be destroyed, records that can't be destroyed. I think it's basically more of a storage issue, and although there is some legality on if you decide that you're going to maintain them, that you have a duty to now maintain them for as long as your policy says. So if you say, I'm going to keep these records for 10 years, and you don't have them, you know, you've stated that that's what I'm going to do, we're going to keep them, and you assume that responsibility, but these are just minimum record retention schedules.
And I know some companies that, as you said, we keep the records forever and forever is five years, it's not forever. They, they give you pressure that...
For five years, whichever comes.
Yeah, really. So I'm, I'm very skeptical about things like that, because it doesn't seem to follow what is logical. I think records should be caught personally, should be kept a little longer. And I could, I could honestly see if you would argue 10 years, that maybe that has a good ring to it, maybe a decent amount of time. Five years is too short a period of time to me, three years certainly too short a period of time to me. People want to access those records. And I know you gave a number about some requests that have been made. All it takes is one, which I think all of us have been together, one request that is not honored to be, to affect a person's lives. If we create the records, why should we be destroying the records? Doesn't make sense. Sort of like, maybe getting married and three, after three years, shred that document, you know, do it again, or find somebody else or something. It doesn't make sense.
I don't think that the records that have been destroyed are not records that were previously provided or given to you.
See, when you make that assumption, and any of us here sitting here can ask, answer that question, will tell the parent you have to get the records. Look what a mobile society this is. Parents often depend on a hospital, a doctor, a school system to be able to have the records of their children, because they might be off in Afghanistan fighting wars, there are circumstances. And it just doesn't happen that way. The parents do not have it. And they do depend on going back to the school system, to City Hall, to a doctor's office to be able to get the records. They do depend on that. And I think they have a right to depend on it. They're paying the taxes to be sure that we do the job, and I think we should be doing the job.
So you're telling me that if I took my child to Dr. Powers, back when he was a baby 50 years ago, I could get those records?
I could get them for you, yeah, I know where they are. Keep them all, every single one.
I'd go to the cardiologist, because they're gone.
We've had to store those records all the way back to the beginning.
Okay, on the, first of all, good morning, everyone. On the next slide that Ms. Powers was mentioning, I know, looking through the PowerPoint, what we did is put together the record requests for general education and special education that have been received this far, this, for this school year. So back from in August up to present, the schools gave us the information, which they keep track of, the, the records request that they have. Now, just to kind of explain, people get a little bit confused with records request and then what becomes like a transcript. A records request really is just like a transcript, but when we think of records in like the folder that Regina was referring to, it's the CUEM folder, it has everything in there, like every record. So when it reaches, when they get ready to graduate from high school, it's still, you know, those things are stored and they're held for the retention time and all of that. But eventually, that records request becomes like a packet of what we call a transcript. It's almost like all of that stuff is combined together into a transcript. You know, their academic history, a lot of that information that is, it's not really in like a folder anymore. So some people think records request, transcripts, two different things. It's just, it just really depends on where the child is at the time in their academic career, as far as what would still be there.
And when you say that a lot of these are requested from colleges, the student, the students, for students who are applying, and if you apply to five colleges, you're going to get five records requests on the month, do they?
Yes, and I was going to clarify that. For example, Citrus High School received 1,169 record requests so far this year. So that is an accumulation of ESE records. It's maybe students that have been out of school for five years, and now they've decided to go to college. It's ones that graduated last year who have planned on going to college. I mean, the gamut is wide. I mean, the, the schools aren't expected to keep, you know, they just do, like, keep a running total of what their record requests are and who the students are. So some of these, you know, you could have had one student who had five records requests, the transcripts were sent to various places. Crystal River High School received 991 requests, LaCantle High School, 776, WTI, 140, and Crest is 67 record requests. So...
Okay, I had a question. These numbers, from when to when, 1,169, this school year?
Yes, this came, this is from August 2013. We had them start when this school year started, to try to get some sort of timeline, and then they ran it up to the time that we gathered this data.
Wow.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a lot. So, the schools do, you know, when I had conversation with them, and that's the, the next piece, that out of all of these requests, and it's the, the accumulation of all the records requests throughout the district, there were a total of 26 requests, which is less than 1%, was 0.83% for records that exceeded the retention schedule. However, that, that packet of transcripts that I was speaking of, that is, that never ever, ever goes away. That's available to anyone. But some of the other things, you know, in a record, maybe, that somebody was requesting, you know, were the things because it was out of the, if it was 10 or 20 years later. So anyway, that's the percentage of, you know, the requests that were given, that we weren't able to give every single little bit of information that they were asking.
Because those fell underneath the temporary category, they weren't permanent. Had the record request been permanent one, you would have been able to give the information? Or you couldn't give it, oh, it just totally went away. The 26 requests, were they for records that were under temporary category or permanent category?
Well, it couldn't be permanent, because we would never get rid of permanent information.
So those are something that, what we have is temporary?
And would, excuse me, wait.
No, I said, it could have been, they wanted to have the information, or something like that. Could be any of the categories under temporary.
Correct. When a person requests a record, who has to gather all the information to give the information they want to give to them? I mean, the request goes to who?
The, it depends on who they've, you know, made the contact at the school. It's usually the registrar or a, the data secretary at a school. And then they go in the system and, you know, put the information in, depending on where...
What those people did all day?
Yeah.
Data secretary.
And it depends on when the student graduated, what, because we've, as we're transitioning, you know, sometimes it's Skywork, sometimes it's Fortis, sometimes it's Terms, so...
When you say the permanent records, grades and classes, is that all the, from kindergarten through 12? Or is that just high school on the permanent records?
It's, I believe that's all of their academic history.
So you could pull up someone's entire...
No, it would just be the high school. Yeah.
Okay, you can't get elementary or middle, it's not part of the permanent record?
No.
A break pays out the question, I guess. And discipline history?
That's never part of a student's CUEM folder.
And what about those expulsions? When the expulsions are on the record, what record do they go on? Do they go on the transcript?
Those, the hard copies are kept in our vault, where I think it's a five or seven year period, I'd have to verify that. It would take me a minute, I have a transcript here to confirm unequivocally your, your question. I'm pretty sure in the Roman history, you have a code of W21.
What?
I'm sorry, expulsion, sorry. So give me a few minutes to look at that, so I can answer positively.
Because we get asked that question a lot of times from parents, that that's part of the record that we're...
So the only permanent record is what happened to the next one? Nothing else matters? Is that what you're saying?
That's what we say.
But the reality is, when people come to interview about a student, particularly back on J. F. Government job, they go all the way back to kindergarten, I know they go through little school.
They do, may question your neighbors.
Absolutely, so the information is, is requested.
Well, there was another question that came up, and I apologize for not being here at that last meeting, but what's required, what are we required to retain? This is including these items, but certainly not exclusive to these items. We always, in the ESE records, have the individual education plan, that would be the permanent copy with signatures on it, not the drafts. Education plans for our gifted students, individual family support plans for the children birth to age three. We keep a copy of the parent informed consent for giving us permission to evaluate their child, keep copies of the parent's invitations to attend their meetings. Any formal evaluation or reevaluation reports are in the student's CUEM record and notice of reevaluations. And we retain all of that information for five years after a student graduates with a standard diploma. We have an obligation to allow students who graduate with a special diploma to continue to pursue a standard diploma until the age of 22. So those students who have not achieved a standard diploma, we would hold on to their records until their 27th birthday.
And where do you keep those records?
Those records are in the six-part ESE file at the school with the CUEM file.
And then afterwards, they're still stayed at the same school?
For the retention period?
For that retention period? They don't come to the district or something?
No. We do maintain some records at the district. Let me go through these. We develop, there was some questions about electronics. We have a tool in our department that's developed by some of our staff members, it's called iPlan. And that is a tool that we use to keep us in compliance, and it helps the specialists develop a draft IEP. But that IEP is not a permanent IEP until it's been printed and signed by everyone and agreed upon. So once we are looking at having a record that an auditor would come in and ask us to look at, they don't go into this draft system, they must look at the, the actual IEP.
So that's a paper copy?
That's a paper copy. And then that permanent record, the IEP is part of their record and maintained in the file at the school, and it has those other pieces. But we have, our school psychologists are housed out of our office, this is, we never see them, but this is their main office. And any of their evaluations or formal reevaluations, where they've done psychometric assessments, those test protocols, and the, one of the copies of the report is kept here in our vault in the ESE department. And we go through the same process, we keep those for five years after the student has achieved standard diploma or until their 27th birthday. And of course, we don't go through it every day and eliminate records on their birthday, but annually, Debbie Newcomb, who soon you'll be getting her paperwork on retiring, goes through the vault and clears out any of those records who, that we are no longer required to keep.
Well, you pulled up a name, Jane Doe, who graduated from high school, you know, three years ago, was an ESE student. Now, where are her records, graduating from high school, and where are her ESE records? Her, not, or is, is there a notation on the permanent records that she has an ESE record? How would I know to access an ESE record?
Her ESE record would be at the school that she graduated from, for five years after she graduated the standard diploma.
So if I went to pull Jane Doe's records...
From Citrus High.
How would I know she has an ESE record? She has a regular CUEM folder, or is the ESE record in the CUEM folder?
They're all together. And there's also notation on the transcripts, the student with their primary disability.
Okay.
And then I guess there were some questions about a 504 plan. Students who are on a 504 plan, it's the same thing. We retain those records for five years after they've achieved a standard diploma.
And would it be, if they don't receive a standard diploma, it's kept until, like, 27th, 27th?
It would be for an IEP, we don't have that... It would be for an IEP, we don't have that same obligation for a student with a disability who has a 504 plan. We would just continue to support them attempting to achieve standard diploma, but I don't know, but age twenty-two and five more years after that, I'm not aware of that. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. One of the questions, I believe, was what we saw electronically. We still have our old CrossPoint system available. There was a commitment made when we first moved to Skyward to keep that system available for five years in case there were any auditing information that was needed from that system. So we plan to keep it around for three more years. It has all the student data dating back to when we began on that system back in nineteen ninety, except for some, I'm sorry, this guy skipped. Except for some of the schedules were purged back in two thousand, so. As far as Skyward, we went ahead and converted all the transcripts. We pretty much converted now most of the student information from CrossPoint into Skyward. We recently loaded all the attendance and discipline records from CrossPoint into Skyward because that was one of the requests when we switched systems was to have that information available, so.
So Skyward is where the discipline records are kept?
They currently are there, dating back to the ninety-one school year, yes.
And how long are those Skyward records kept?
Uh, this is the first time we've been asked about that. As far as discipline records, it does have some utilities that can be used to purge records. You can purge them either based on the school year, or you can purge them based on the graduation year of the student. So those are available if we want to make our electronic system a little more in line with our records retention requirements. As far as attendance data, that can be purged based on the school year it was entered. And as far as our ESE program information, the programs that they were in and the dates of evaluations and program entry and exit, that can be purged based on school year, or that can also be purged based on exit date. But right now, we have all of that information dating back to...
So I'll work back to nineteen ninety?
That's correct.
I checked with Mr. Chamberlain about the expulsion question. Can you share with the board what you shared?
As far as electronic records, through Faster, if it's an inter-district transfer to other school districts, Faster has a requirement that we send any of the major infractions that occurred in the last two years as part of their Faster record.
Wow. So a student is sophomore in high school, got expelled from kindergarten to school and middle school, and that's not part of his permanent record?
No, that's not part of the electronic. Not part of the electronic.
Honestly, it seems like if any student goes through our system, we should have records on the student going through our system.
Well, we always have that, I mean, we have...
But we purge things, like, like you're talking about with the, we don't have the...
Well, he hasn't purged yet.
Middle school. Yeah, don't purge, don't purge.
But, but I mean, obviously there's a requirement to always keep the transcript information.
But there's six, some things, and I guess maybe we're feeling that more today than other days when we, when we deal with issues where kids have had some problems and that maybe it isn't middle school or even earlier. And you want those records to be available to someone who's checking. You don't want it purged as if it never happened, like the commercial activities.
And that's a question we often get asked at middle school level, when a student's expelled, this is going to keep my student from going to college or getting a scholarship, and I guess we have to tell them, well, after two years, nobody will ever know it, so we won't tell them that much. If you were to purge the record. So it's a data, data storage issue probably, or someone sitting down and actually purging records going through, do we have to go one by one, or you can do a sort of best?
It depends on the, the information. On the attendance data, we can purge that by the school year it occurred in.
Okay.
Now, that's the transaction information. The summary data would remain because that's part of the, part of the record. As far as discipline data, there are utilities available to purge that based on the student's grad year or based on the school year that the discipline occurred in. And then as far as the ESE program summary information, that can be purged based on the student's grad year, or it can be purged based on the student's exit date.
So if somebody called the school and wanted information and the information wasn't available, because the school didn't have a record of it, would they contact you and ask you if you had electronic records, but they accessed it themselves?
The school, the school can access it directly.
Can the school access CrossPoint?
Yes, they still have access to CrossPoint to view information, not to change it, but to view.
Okay, so they have access to all the records, paper and electronic?
Yes.
For how long?
As long as they're in the system.
So it gets purged?
It gets purged, and ask, how many years? Five years?
Well, they, he says, we have to purge.
They're just as concerned to me that we would be purging records because it's, are important, and that maybe when we sit and listen to closed-door sessions with them, where the student is up for disciplinary action, we have to listen, so we're very concerned that you have those records, that they're accessible. Now, they would be necessary still in school, but what about the person who's listening? Seven years from now, the person has just broken into Fort Knox and taken all the gold, you know, something like that. You should be able to go back and find the information from that.
So you're saying you don't want to purge?
I, I honestly do not want to purge all. I would, I certainly think five years, three years, that's too short a period of time, totally.
One of the problems that I think we're going to be facing though is, is that whatever we do to a paper record, we have to be consistent to do to the digital record, and vice versa. And I think we could, I mean, yeah, we, yes, we could set a separate standard, but I would think, Mr. Bradshaw, we should not be setting a separate standard. Whatever we do with one, it's the content that determines it, not, not the medium in which it's held on. So, if we were to say we wanted to not purge these records as we have them, then in theory, we should be keeping paper records of all of this for the same length of time.
Well, the only problem is two. So here we have CrossPoint that we're hanging on to for an additional five years after we're not using it anymore. And then when we move away from Skyward, we'll have to keep Skyward up and running so we can access the record. I mean, it's just like, you know, we have stuff on eight-track, and then we have a copy of tape, and then we have our, none of our, our videos from our kids' work because we don't have those characters anymore.
Yeah, I'd like to, and this is the final slide, I know you're disappointed, address Mr. Kennedy's comment. And so the question is, what does a record or information being in electronic format mean? And so you have been hearing all this stuff up to this point has been from General Records Schedule GS-7, which is designed for public school systems. What you're looking at on your screen right now is General Records Schedule GS-1 for state and local government agencies. And so that's kind of the preliminary beginning kind of overview. And basically, what the gist of this says is, it's not the format of the record, it's the content of the record. And so just because something's in email, what, what determines the amount of time any information in electronic format should be retained is the content of that communication.
And who determines the content of the communication? Is this important? Is this important?
Yeah, you know, I think that's what you observed when you called it, well, different categories that have been defined. You used a, I forget the word that you used earlier, like temporal, you know, permanent, there's different categories. But, you know, to be honest, we now for a few years, because of federal regulation and law, have been emailing, I mean, archiving our email, electronic email system. I bet we've got eight million in there by now. And so, by the definition of this quote in front of you...
Seven million or just a half million.
Yeah, it's something like your misdeutations, I know. We keep upgrading your mailbox size.
I had to purge it, do it again, it's good.
So, the fact is, you know, we don't need to keep email indefinitely, probably. It maybe should be based on the longest record that we do have to keep based on the content of that information. But at this point, so more to, you know, the historical data in Skyward that Mr. Chamberlain referenced, we're just keeping it, so.
Mr. Bradshaw, do we, do board members have a different standard than GS-1 here for our, I, I didn't know if, so we don't, our correspondent, somebody emails us?
It's part of the school system.
It's part of the school systems, and so that it would fall under whatever...
You, you can't keep stuff forever, forever is ridiculous.
Yeah.
Probably what we've got to do is, I get what you're trying to get is about, you know, maybe cut the date off and see what the absolute longest...
Isn't it like ten years or something? Isn't that sort of a standard after that? Something like that?
I mean, part of the reason is because we have certain public records that you have to keep.
Some of those are saved forever. The public records, some, some of those you have to keep forever? Correspondents and everything?
No, it's, there's some of it, it says, you know, like two or three years after it's useful, there's some, some different things, right? The student records that you want to keep, but you have, it's after a certain period of time, it's purged, a lot of it, because it really just drops down to your category A records that you have to keep.
I need to nail this because I have to talk to my students and stuff. Purging.
So, just, just to summarize, we provided you with information today of what our current practices are. As you can see, GS-7 actually declares five years for things that we're actually holding on for five-plus years, and we realize that. So as a board, you've got that balance of, you know, the, the information that we're retaining in the records, and then to what degree do you do that? So, again, I hope we've provided that to you, and you can see it actually spans over a multiple, multitude of departments. So it's a good opportunity for us to actually have a good conversation about that. So I, I tend to turn it over to Wes.
And, and Mr. Bradshaw, I tried pulling up our record retention policy. With some of the information we've been presented here, are we complying with that? Or by keeping some of these records, in essence, forever, are we not meeting our policy?
Well, I think the policy says it's going to turn it into business services to follow the record retention policy.
So, yeah, that, I mean, I thought it was something of that nature, that's why I was trying to pull it up.
Yes. So, I mean, my, I mean, personally, my legal advice would be, you know, whatever your record retention policy is, follow it and purge when you're done. So, if you say keep records for five years, keep them for five years, and purge them. If you say keep them for ten years, keep them for ten years, purge them.
I, I know, Ms. Powers, that you were hoping that this is showing about keeping records longer, but there's some pieces, this actually seems to me like what it's told us is that we need to actually get rid of some records.
And I agree with you, you know, a picture drawn in kindergarten does not need to be kept, it really doesn't. It's just some of the information such as a standardized test score, the discipline stuff needs to be kept because it's important in the life of a person. When a, maybe a group goes back, a attorney goes back and says, well, this student did nothing that was bad at all in high school and middle school, any other place, and he just happened one time in his life to do something wrong. It's important. When we keep it and we say it's important because we keep it, then it is important and it should be kept. If, if we, we want to purge everything, then why keep it in the first place, you know, it's not going to do it. And I would like to see, and I understand in Nerdaw that forever, although I'd keep it forever, maybe too long, but I do think three to five years, that's too short. I could see a ten-year policy and that wouldn't give me heartburn, a ten-year policy, but three to five, it'd be a burden.
But the burden is, who's going to maintain those records for ten years? Where are you going to store them? And how are you going to access them? And that, you know, remember years ago, it was Pat, um, Kaladak? Kaladak? Oh, Pat, Pat, right, Kaladak, Missy, Roger Weaver. Yeah, and people would call her up and she'd say, well, I'm Tuesday, I'm going up in the attic, and you'd have to wait for her to put their rugs around, I don't know how many piles, thirty thousand piles or something, stuff up there. Eventually, a lot of those got, or maybe they all did, got scanned in at a big expense to us. I don't know how those are being maintained electronically, you know?
Those seem to be the stand.
All those were scanned, they were all from Citrus High, we brought them over, we scanned all those.
Into what program?
Into four, it says, electronic document database that we have outside. Those were prior to the terms of Skyward here, so we have all the old ones. So we scanned in what was the permanent record of all those individuals.
Yeah, I think the question really came up, Ms. Haines, was about the IEPs. You know, especially if, if that documents a student's disability, so the plans for that student and the progress that that student made, that's, how is that any different than grades and transcripts? And so, I think the question was, is there a way to permanently preserve IEPs?
Well, one of the things that we've made a big focus this year in our department is making sure that our students recognize their responsibility to themselves and their records. I think we've done a really fine job of saying to them, you're the one that needs to be responsible for this. As they're graduating, we're telling them, keep your most recent evaluation report and your IEP. But eventually, those become obsolete. You know, people think that if you maintain that record, then that's going to get you VR services, or make you eligible for SSI, or other kinds of agencies, and that's really not the case. They have to re-qualify for services as an adult, so that IEP, it becomes obsolete.
The IEP though sometimes is used though, when people are applying for SSD. I, I think it helps document their disabilities, but it might also be that that's not ten years out, that might be someone who's waiting, or even a student that's still in school.
It is, it is a piece of that.
Someone just didn't come up with it just to get money or get a program. It's always been there, and that's, you go back to the records.
But keep in mind, they still will always have those transcripts. They'll have a record of their eligibility.
You know, one of the things that my sister just went through, she has a severely disabled son, and she had to file to get guardianship because he's in a residential program. And the difference between an adult guardian, there's two even guardianships, and one of them is based on whether or not this, this person was always disabled. And then it's a much easier process than if you have to prove that that disability came about during some event that happened after they were born, and now you have to go through all this to see if you're the proper guardian or whatever. So, so how are those record, what kind of records do we have on a student that proves that when they were in kindergarten, they were, they were highly disabled?
Even if they've moved away, we maintain those records until they've reached that age of standard diploma five years out, or special diploma at the age of twenty-seven.
Okay, so after that, they'll then, the records are gone?
Yes.
Wow.
If I have an IEP and I'm in first grade, and now in tenth grade I have an IEP, are we keeping those IEPs all along?
Yes.
Okay.
Some of our student records in the high school are that thick.
So we're not purging IEPs?
No.
While they're still students?
Correct.
So it would be in that case, five years after?
You would have the whole historical record of that student as an ESE student.
Five years after standard.
After standard.
Or at the age of twenty-seven, if you have a special.
Correct.
And I would agree, the one, the other one that is surprising to me is the standard test scores.
Yeah.
That just seems like, again, given just...
ACC and SAP.
So that's on the transcript?
But honestly, if it's...
I think the FCAT thing is on that.
Absolutely, after graduation.
High school FCAT.
After high school graduation, not only anybody's concerned about what's...
So we would still, we still keep standardized tests while they're a student then? That entire still goes in a Q and folder? Okay.
What's on the transcript for FCAT is the year they passed the math and the reading, graduation.
Okay, well, that would then maybe why that, that's not on the retention schedule?
And that's kept for five years after graduation. Here, that's...
Very short, but five years. And I would add, so you talked about the student's supposed to keep his records, you know, from this point on. And I know, I called up one time in another area, because there was a, a student who was in a residential, an ESE student in a residential facility, and in the evening, he would ride his bicycle down the middle of the road, and this, now he was an adult, but he was still in a facility. And I just, this man is going to be killed, he's going to be run over, because he rides it in the middle of the night, down the road, not the middle, eleven o'clock at night. And the reply I got was, he's an adult, he can make his own decisions. What? You know? So I called the, you know, the authorities and said, we really need to look out for this person because he's going to be killed. But that reply to me was not a reply at all, because he'd been in the system for a very long period of time and helped by everyone who was in the system, and now he's older and he's supposed to make his own decisions when, I don't know how old he was, twenty-five years or something, he'd been guided and helped and, and just, just looked out for to show him the correct thing to do. And riding a bicycle in the middle of the road at eleven o'clock at night is not the correct way to do it. But that goes back to... But that goes back to Ms. Deutschman's comment about guardianship. And that's another responsibility that we take very seriously in our department in talking to parents about the importance of really determining whether or not that's a decision they have to make before that child hits the age of eighteen.
Yeah, but something just can't be turned over in the instance, it's just here, now you're an adult, do it yourself, you know, that like, and it troubled me. So, when an answer comes back, we'll let them, no matter ESE or not, have the records, let them keep their own records. Sometimes it just doesn't work that way, sometimes it, it can't work that way. He cannot be Afghanistan and get his records and have them with him at all times to show that he made English, sophomore English.
But even if that is, that young man or an older man had ridden his bicycle down the middle of the road, I mean, his IEP wouldn't have helped someone establish guardianship, it would be a legal proceeding.
That was the point, the point was the fact that he couldn't just be turned loose one day, totally protected and all the records kept for him, the next day you're on your own ground because now you're at this age and, you know, you're out the door.
But that's the reality of what really happened.
At twenty-two.
Or twenty-seven.
And so.
At twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
They don't have to educate, you know, being on, at twenty-two, at the latest, and after that, they're no longer part of the situation.
So, Mr. Grant, so GS seven is a Florida law or federal law?
Florida law, by the Department of, Secretary of State, Department of Libraries, it's the, they do all the record retention schedules for all the.
So, you would assume that all the school districts follow the same policy?
Yes.
Board, we need to give, get some consensus here to give direction.
On what though?
Well, one thing I think we have to, I think, I do question that we've got to review the policy to make sure that we are doing what we're doing in practice, that we're actually doing. So, that would be, I think, one thing that needs to be done.
If you want, I'll get the staff.
If you would.
Okay.
And then, I think the other direction is that electronically, we need to be doing the same retention as we're doing for paper, which we're not. And then I think we then have to determine if we're keeping, if we're going to go beyond what the state's recommended retention schedule is. But I think first, I think, I think we've, we've given direction for policy, to review policy. Now, I think we have to decide too, is electronic communication, I think we're being told it should not be handled differently. Should not be, and is there anyone that disagrees with that or? So, that's, that's a direction and then I guess that may be something we reflect in policy if we need to. And then, do we have a decision as to what we want to do about the time?
I'd like to review that also, not forever, forever I understand is much too long, but I think five years, or three years, five years.
Why don't we bring it to us as what it is now, as per GS seven? And then, when it comes to us as a policy, we can have that discussion if that works.
The only thing is, I would like to know how much file space, one year's worth of academics records take up?
Do we have to get them servered, cost?
No. In a file cabinet, in a room.
Well, we have two, two high school past administrators here, Mr. Simon and Ms. Humbar, and I mean, I've had the.
We'll review, we'll check with the high school.
I think that's something that we can actually bring back as part of that, that policy. Because I, I think I know what you're saying and it's, it's a valid question to, for us to have that information.
We have, I actually, my husband rents two ten-foot by thirty-foot warehouses full of files that we're, some of them are getting ready to purge because we're guarding to electronic records, but it is a huge burden to maintain files, paper files, find them, categorize them, put them somewhere, go find them, go retrieve them.
And if we were to give direction for an extended period of time, we're going to have to look at that, what that cost is going to be and if we would need a management system or if our current management system would accommodate that. But let's, and, and Ms. Powers, it's to say, let's bring it back with the whole policy. We can, we still have time then to address the, the number of years. Is that, would that be okay? Okay. Is that? We can't make a decision today anyway, but I wanted to at least give you something so that we move from here.
But it wouldn't be without a cost because the schools would have to buy more file cabinets.
There's comcreables. Fireproof too, yeah.
It has to be fireproof, oh my God.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Insecure, it has to be in a locked.
And access to that, you know, you all know that, yeah, but basically that.
Please don't give me the keys to mine.
And I, I thought you just said that we had to keep them the same, the electronic and the paper, so that's not true?
No, you did.
Yeah, but what he's saying is he hasn't purged them and I, what I'm hearing, Mr. Kennedy's saying is that maybe we need to do that.
But with retention, that you treat them the same, it's kind of, it's kind of like emails. It's the content of the email, whether you print it out on paper, whether it's electronic, it's the content that determines, you know, what you do with it. So, it's the same as far as the electronic, you know, records. I mean, if it's stored in Skyward and not on paper, it's still the same, it's the category of, of the type of record that determines the record retention, not just because it's like in an electronic format that it can be treated any different.
And I think once we're, we do get through some of this, the other thing we have to do is, do we have records that are creating, that fall into that temporary, that are being created in schools with now the amount of digital products that we have out there? And do we find that we need to make sure schools are aware of their, that responsibility to, it, or if there is one? There may be none that we have to do, but, but then we need to let people know what that is. Okay, I think we've done that, Mr. Blocker?
Yes, if y'all want, I don't have a lot of state of the budget.
We can't afford it.
We can't afford you.
Ma'am?
So, when we stand all.
So, just thanks for your call, may I use me?
Thank you, pleasure.
Thank y'all.
Paper records.
Thank you.
Once all those old records were scanned and painted on the paper, they're all.
They're shredded. Shredded. Shredded.
And did we have, uh, white work desk? So, for people that needed jobs.
Okay. Today, we wanted to talk a little bit about the general fund budgeting and general fund only. We haven't even started the capital process, but we wanted to just start the conversation again like we do every year and it's almost like a broken record every year, we come to you and say, we've got to make serious budget reductions, we've got to make budget reductions. So, with this, I tell you, this is the year that we cannot live off the fund balance anymore and I'll kind of go through and show you the information. Just to kind of recap the current situation as we reported to you before, we're down about sixty students or about a hundred and twenty-three in the waiting from this year on the third calculation. That loss in FEIP revenue is down about six hundred thousand dollars as I showed you before. And that loss is kind of broken down into two parts, about four hundred and forty-three thousand from the FTE and the net loss from Duke is about a hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Now, remember, that would have been much greater, but we've got a, an increase in sparsity of about one point five million that helped offset that. And the reason that helped is because the property school tax value was reduced so much that we got more sparsity because we weren't getting as much in our discretionary local effort, so that's kind of how that.
Just the last time we discussed, we would not get sparsity next.
In the governor's budget, he has our school tax value increasing even more, that we would not receive any sparsity next year.
But if that doesn't happen, then we still hit sparsity.
Correct, as long as we don't wealth adjust ourselves out based on the value of the property.
And your thoughts on that, do you think that?
I don't think we'll hit that number based on some conversations we've had with the property pressure, I don't think we'll hit that. I think, I think we'll see kind of more in line with where we're at today. Good, bad, or indifferent, I hope we have a true answer as to that. So, this is kind of how we went through and specifically made some reductions and invited to address those areas and these are the ones we've been over with you before and kind of explained to you where we were kind of making those reductions in the general fund.
And Mr. Blocker, these are ones that have been ongoing, this seven hundred or so thousand?
Ongoing and certainly we addressed the majority of these when we saw the reduction from Duke and the.
So, some of the like schools, we'll look at the SAC meetings and they talked about their discretionary amounts and then, and pulling back. I know I went to one where they, they brought back their budget, making those adjustments for that ten percent, that's all those things.
And the categorical funding, remember, in the FEIP, if you get less than the categorical funding, we have the correspondence, we make the reduction in expenses, so that's why you see the two hundred thousand there.
And how do we reduce the diesel?
Uh, you know, just, I talked to Marilyn and asked her, you know, hey, you know, we forecast X for, for diesel price, you know, how are we doing? Can we reduce some of those costs? And, you know, she'll do an analysis and say, you know, we've kind of saved some here, or maybe we estimate the price to be three fifty a gallon and it's been coming at three thirty-five, so we have some differences there. Now, that's not to say that if it doesn't shoot back up, I may have to go back and give her that fifty thousand.
Yeah, because it's going up right now.
I mean, it's head and flow all year long, I mean, so we try to make a balance on that. And every year, we, we, we look at diesel to see, you know, do we over budget, do we under budget? It's just, we kind of forecast, but sometimes, you know, those forecasts change. So, as we look at the end of the year, I draw your attention to the blue column. This is what we anticipate the end of the year to look like. This is certainly where we, we, we hope we'll end up at, but we're looking at essentially a deficit this year of about one point seven million. And you can see we have some, some reserves that we have to put aside, the three hundred and fifty thousand for inventories restricted. Those are a lot of your WTI expenses that have to be restricted, whether it be workforce development dollars, your performance-based incentives, et cetera, a lot of money next door that gets restricted and held because they have to spend it specifically at work at WTI. And then the assigned or some of the carryovers we assign to schools and, like the discretionary accounts or maybe other accounts such as that, we, we internally decide that we're going to roll those over. So, you can see, we're hitting, anticipating, and I certainly hope that this comes, comes in as we anticipate, where we're hitting that fund balance undesignated about three point seven million or about three and a half percent hitting that board policy. And then I also put in here, remember our, our board policy, and if you go to the second page, where it talks about adequate unreserved fund balance is necessary to cover unforeseen events, including not limited revenue shortfalls, enrollment projections, et cetera, the annual operating budget approved by the school board shall include a feasible fund balance unreserved, which is at least three and a half percent of your recurring revenue budget. So, that's our board policy, that's why we always try to make sure we get that number.
And, and Mr. Blocker, I would just, one question that I think we, and I don't disagree with, with the fund balance and the, and the policy as a whole, but there is a word or two words in there that I, I think we sometimes skip over and that is if feasible, which to me really.
Weasel word.
Yeah, it really just to me means, well, it's a suggestion then to be at three point five. I'm not saying that it's not a good suggestion, by the way, I do not want to imply that, but it does seem to be that it pretty much allows the board to do whatever it wants because it says if feasible.
Right.
And I'm assuming the determination of if feasible is the board's to decide.
But we can't go broke.
So, we can't go broke, but.
You're correct, this is your policy that you've decided to.
So, I'm not even sure if we went under it, we're even violating our policy because if we just said, well, we agree it's not feasible, then we've, you know, not done it. And that does, again, it does not mean that I, you know, that we're saying that.
I used to have an old rule of thumb that I never wanted to go below five million in undesignated.
Exactly.
Mr. Bright, you.
You, you already cast the if feasible on that, so.
I remember that.
But then if you go to the next, the state rule, it talks about, in, in some paragraph one there, anytime the portion of the general fund ending balance goes below the projected three percent, then we have to notify the board, the board that has to, you know, certainly notify DOE or we do of that issue and what we plan on do to get back, you know, right in the ship, so to speak. So, we've always had the three and a half at board, the state now comes in at three, and then the second paragraph indicates, if you go below the two, that's when you really have issues, DOE comes in and basically tells.
They tell you where to cut.
Make your budget cut, so we don't want to even get in those areas, we want to, we want to maintain our own house.
This is Ms. Powers' fear of us getting arrested. What school board did get arrested for going into the red, a couple of years ago?
Well, I know Manatee certainly has some issues right now, but they've had to go actually testify on the legislature with the auditors and what they're doing to pull, again, I believe, Dr. Blanton has had to go down there and help with the school board and.
But wouldn't that be the, I mean, the school board, I mean, wouldn't that be the superintendent and the finance director that would be the ones that you would say are responsible for making some bad financial?
They recommend that the board has to approve, is what it is though.
You know, and, and one of my functions is, is the.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say, that's, that's us.
Yeah, I can tell you that, that there are some conversations out there because typically when people leave, they're, they kind of wash their hands of it and they're gone, so they have been having conversations about, well, the people who kind of got on there and now they're gone, they should be held accountable as well, so, because, you know, a lot of times like in coaching, you bring a team, you get it up there and you go into probation and then you go get on the job and the team's left to deal with the issues, so there has been conversation about that. So, I just want to make sure I bring that to your attention one more time, I know we've spoken about this before, but just to, you know, bring it back up to today. So, if you kind of look at kind of the span over the last four years, you can see we've been using our fund balance to balance our budget, good, bad, or indifferent, we certainly spoke to y'all about certain budget reductions and the amount of budget reductions, but we have come to the conclusion over the past years that the fund balance system was an avenue to use to help balance it. So, we've used about twelve, over twelve million dollars in the last four years and I'm telling you, there's, there's just no more there to be used. It cannot be used as a balancing for the teardrop, so to speak. And I can tell you, I know the auditor has asked me, what are we doing to address this issue? I had a conversation with our, one of our rating agencies, that's certainly a concern of theirs, what we're doing, so we've certainly got to make some changes so we don't dip into a, this situation anymore.
And they say, what are we doing?
They want to know a plan, how are we addressing, yes, yes, how are we actively going to change our expenditures to meet the, the needs of the school district, but yet also looking at our, our revenue stream.
I got a big sample.
Well, so, and I, and, and in graph form, you can kind of see the red line is the restricted fund balance and the blue is the unrestricted and where we're at in two thousand and ten, we were very strong. We were up to about eighteen million in the restricted and then sixteen, almost sixteen, the unrestricted and then we've certainly used some of those dollars to help us throughout the last few years.
And I just want to say thank you to you three that were here before me in the two thousand and seven to two thousand and ten years because it was that savings that has allowed our classrooms during these economic times to, to continue. So, thank you for that foresight because I think we all had hoped the economics, the economic situation we're in was over, but a lot of good has continued to be able to happen because of that savings, so.
You got to remember, we've kind of hit two concurrent scenarios that have not been beneficial to us. One is certainly the revenues have gone south just through the economy and also our FTE has doubled that on top of us. So, we've kind of hit some of those perfect storm issues that we're losing children while the economy's going bad, so we're losing revenues, so. We've just got to start turning that, turn that line going back up north. So, next year, we start looking at next year's budget, we look to see how our FTE shakes out and I think Mr. Chamberlain and myself spoke to you last time, where we're going to be predicting a decrease in student enrollment of about four hundred and eleven or about four hundred and thirty, on the weighted side for next year. So, if you just look on the base in allocation alone, that's about a reduction of one point six million. In total, it's about two point nine million in total FTE lost, lost for next school year. You can kind of see how we predict the distribution of the reductions in FTE to go. It's virtually about the same across the board and now we have to also include that virtual number that is a real number that we have to deal with now.
Staffing wise, does that mean, you know, we're talking in the sixteen to eighteen teachers?
We certainly will start next week going out and meeting with each and every principal and talking to them about their enrollment projections and how we're going to staff the schools.
I want to chime in right now about staffing fees. Executive staff and ed services will go out and meet with all the schools about their staffing plans. Some of our schools, at the end of this current school year, all of our schools have given up one support person based, you know, because of dollars and budgets. Some of the staffing and some of their FTE numbers will also probably equate to them losing another support person and some of their other staffing, so as we look at our, as our staffing plans, which is dictated by numbers, then when we go out there, they will also be looking at, you know, the staff that they will lose because of FTE numbers and kids. So, I'm just giving you all a heads up because that will be, we've asked them to come to us in the very first meeting and present to us what they feel like if they need to be successful. We're going to take those numbers, look at how many staff members they've requested and then we'll bring that back, we'll look at. We'll look at them, and then there'll be a second meeting of our staff. We're also looking at the district staff and student services. We've got the same number of employees out there that we believe we have, and we have two thousand more kids. So we're looking at those. Um, we've met with Marilyn, excuse me, we met with Marilyn, and she's looking at consolidating bus routes, because we've got four hundred less kids out there, then we may not need all the bus routes and all the different things. She is looking at some of our academies. Our academies do cost us a lot of money to the transport, so some of those kids may be on the bus earlier in the morning and/or they'll have an option to go to the school to be picked up. So we've got all that on the table right now. The next month, we'll be going out to all our different departments and talking about those. That's going to be based on number of the students, because, so as you go through this budget, you'll, we'll see those, um, not benefits of getting the money there, but that's because of the number of students.
So just in gra- graphical form of bar graph, you can see that oh-six, oh-seven was our highest year. We were almost at that sixteen thousand mark, and now we're down to getting close to the fourteen thousand mark. So we've had a drastic decline in enrollment, all while the economy has been, you know, hurting us as well with reduced revenues. So we're kind of getting double reduced revenues, if you will. Uh, you know, and it, it is hard. It's hard to start making some of those drastic changes, but unfortunately, it's, it's going to have to come to some of those, um, changes that we're going to have to look at for the budget.
The students who left, did you notice what families they were from? Were they were employed? Was it construction? Was it, uh, Duke? Was it, what was it?
You know, I think it's a combination of a lot of things. Duke certainly has had some impact, but that's only been the last couple of years. I mean, prior to that, it's probably been more of your, you know, your industry, your trade workers, you know, in, in the county, based on the economy's gone away and, um, you know, within people just aren't moving to this area, or if they are, they're essentially the retirees that have no children. So, um, I think the economy has driven the majority of it away, certainly. But, you know, we look at data, and data says that the metropolitan areas are actually increasing. They're growing, and it's actually, we're, we're just years away, because we've got Hillsborough, Pasco, Hernando, and Citrus, and it, it just takes us a while to start getting back into the fold. If you look at building permits, they're actually starting to go up this year as opposed to last year. So we're hoping that we're seeing some, some, some movement.
Uh, and if you drive on, on the streets anytime, it looks like we were in the middle of New York, there's so many cars, you know, but as you said, it's probably retirees or different.
Snowbirds.
And as you know, they typically are the ones that call and know why their taxes are part of the way they are, because they don't have kids in school, so...
They pay for their kids.
Right. And this is the governor's budget I put up here, and I know it's kind of small, but I just wanted, this is what I wanted to read last time, but I wanted to point out that he still has in his, uh, proposed budget a line on the teacher salary allocation of about two point four million. So he, he, it's in there. That's a, that's earmarked dollars. That is for the same thing we had to do last year, was essentially have to give it out into, um, into increases, salary increases for staff. So that did not change.
The, the third, um, calculation on that?
Yes.
The, uh, uh, school taxable value, that's the Duke?
That's the reduction that DOE calculates based on the, the Duke, um, non-payment.
So again, it shows back going up in the, in the governor's budget.
Yeah.
Um, and I state this because, again, this is what people don't understand. We don't have the luxury of putting a placeholder in there.
No, and as I've explained before, you know, when we asked DOE last year to kind of base it on the worst-case scenario that, that property prager submitted to us, their hands are tied. His law says they got to use a certified taxable value, and at the time, he used the ten point eight billion, and that's what we had to base the budget on. Now, we don't know what's going to hold the next few months as far as any type of movement on the Duke issue, but we're hoping that there can be hopefully some movement, positive settlement, whatever it may be, court, uh, decision, that we can get an actual true value number that we can use as certified. So we don't have to go through this again for a third year in a row where we're value at X, but then it really comes in on Y. We got to make mid-year...
And other districts suffer as a result of it because they get then adjusted to cover the cost of Citrus County.
Right, because there's no more money allocated out to the district or to DOE to, to compensate for this. They just take from the rest of the districts, much like the sparsity, they take it away from the other sparsity numbers.
And I tried to explain that to your friend. See, if they would get a little more involved with us, but he's always taking the backseat and probably underhand you when around the back door, it didn't help. So it does impact all the other small districts when that sparsity kicks in.
And, and I learned my lesson in our workplace several years ago, dealing with that individual, knowing that there might have been some...
Oh, and there was, no?
Yeah.
Okay.
His first, his first initial C, just so in case anybody's trying to guess, it's, it's maybe not who you think. The, the other thing, too, I thought, uh, was interesting is the base student allocation. Um, I went back to our previous budget book and looked, and if you start, we are, you know, again, pre-two thousand and four of what our base student allocation is for students. And Mr. Deutschman, I know I've heard you try to, again, get frustrated when people were saying, well, we're, you got more money this year. Well, the base student allocation has gone down. The high was, I believe, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, and it was about four thousand.
Right, that was the banner year.
And that was the banner year. Um, and again, you all did save during those years, put monies so that we could operate, but we've basically been operating on those savings.
Right, and, and that just goes back to, you know, the revenues have gone down along with the FTE, so we've lost twice, twofold. In the governor's budget, he does increase our allocation by about four hundred thousand dollars, um, but remember, we have to, that's overcompensated by the loss in revenue from the FTE, so... So kind of what we look like for next year, just based on the governor's budget, certainly we know that's not written in stone because we have a whole legislative process to go through, but this is a good guide for us to start with and to start making some, some decisions on. So we got to, we got to overcompensate, we got to compensate for the deficit from this year that we were estimating about one point seven million. The governor's budget for salary allocation, we have to cover that, about two point four million. We know he's giving us an increase of about four hundred and twenty-five, so the net of that is we're, uh, in a deficit of about three point seven million dollars that we're going to have to overcome.
The one point seven from two thousand and fourteen, where, I thought we had captured some of that.
That's what, remember, that's what we're, it's paying the ending balance to be in our, uh...
After we've...
After revenue expenses, correct.
Okay, is that, is that capital and general?
No, this is just general.
Just general, okay. I just want to make sure that we...
No capital at all.
That was explained, that this is just, these are capi- uh, these are just general numbers, not capital numbers.
And the salary allocation, explain that again.
Well, remember, that's what the governor has in his budget for us to use for increase. So we can't just take that and use it how power we wish.
So even though he gave us, was he...
Looks like he did this past year.
But it'll go into being a negotiating...
Yes.
Strengths. The line item?
Yes. Um, it's, I know it's kind of small, but if you look, teacher salary allocation line, if you go across, it's two point four million.
Now, do we know, and, and again, we go through this every, you know, it seems like the last few years, do we want his budget? Do we not want his budget and all of that? But it says salary allocation here, but the line item, it looked like it said teacher salary. So is there a difference between salary and teacher salary?
Much like it was this year, whenever they got to the end of the day, they realized that somebody must have realized, they didn't have enough money to allocate for the twenty five hundred, thirty-five hundred. That's when DOE came back with some, some, um, information that says, and you, or you can negotiate it, ever how you wish, and that's what we chose to do. We negotiated with all our bar teams to use that dollar amount for salary allocations, not just for the teachers. May I?
Why would we do that again this year?
Well, we may, but we still have to make sure we have that dollar amount allocated out for salary allocations.
And wouldn't you then just reduce your total expenditures that we set aside for raises by that amount?
For steps.
That's what we're trying to do here in this, this...
But, but we would have budgeted something for steps.
Yeah, so...
Correct.
So don't we get to adjust that out?
Well, that's not budget to get to do that. First of all, we're...
He gave us that.
Okay.
First of all, we're starting with a deficit of one point seven. So if we look at new revenue coming in, the four hundred thousand, we take that difference, then we got to add in, for what they're saying, we got to give them raises, and it comes up to the three point seven.
So in previous years, would you have just taken all the salaries in the categoricals and whatever the steps you anticipated those would have been? That would have been a...
Into the budget.
That would have just gone into the budget.
Right. We would do this this year, we just, but we got to over...
This, this, though, we haven't brought everybody over yet, but in essence, you're not including then that in the budget. You're not including step rollovers.
No, the two point four, much like we did this year, that included all the steps. We used all those dollars, inclusive steps and the, and the two percent.
You basically took his money and budgeted the two point four.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
Because we had to do that.
And I'm just going to say, T, the word teacher, just teacher for this or...
Well, if it's like it was this year, we were allowed to negotiate it with all staff. Initially, when the governor put it out, he wanted it to go specifically to teachers.
But again, the po- the positive thing is, is with the, a formula base, as we've talked about, we can then negotiate what that pot, that pot of money is, and then it just flows through.
Right.
With the teachers, that is.
Right.
But you'd still have to then budget back in...
Well, that's the dollar amount.
For your non-instructional staff. That's the amount.
It's just, whatever it is, that's the total amount that, based on what he's allocating. So if you look at this and you say, okay, we make no type of reductions to expenditures to compensate for that three point six million, you would be down to an undesigned fund balance of about two hundred and sixty thousand or about a quarter percent. Now, we know we can't do that. That's certainly not...
Bryant's...
Hopefully in the conversation.
I can put this in print. You just can see my heart palpating.
Just to show you that we, we have to, we have to make some changes.
Yes, you do.
So that deficit would be about three point six million or about a quarter percent of the general fund, um, which we know board policy's three and a half. We're feasible. So if we, basically, if we reduce our expenditures by that three point six, seven, five million, we would have come out, based on this scenario, a balanced budget, even with the categoricals down near the reserves, we would have just under four million dollars of three point six, five percent of the fund balance, is what we estimate. Now, uh, and that just reiterates the same thing. If we did four million, I'll just give you another example, where you have a small surplus in that respect, because the big thing is, we currently, this scenario does not plan on any FTE shortfall or a Duke shortfall that potentially could happen again.
Does not?
No.
Oh, dear.
No, that's, that's what I'm saying. These, these are some scenarios that we have to start thinking through and going through. So we got to review, and then, and this is what, and then our budget planning was, we started, we met with the district staff last week, kind of gave them the scenario of, of how we need them to start looking at their budgets. Um, we need to review all the expenditures and determine an impact on classrooms. We do know we'll have some instructional reductions based on FTE, based on those four hundred students. Uh, district staff, we reiterated to them about make, make sure they utilize the zero base budgeting, and then, um, I think Ms. Hemel gave them an example, if we were starting a school district from scratch, let's see what we do.
Ms. Hemel, could you really explain that? Because I thought, you know, when you explained it to me and when you talked to me about it, it was good for us as a board to hear, because, um, you know, we talk about true zero-based budgeting, but I think you really are, are talking, you know, at the beginning...
When I met with them last week, I told them, and I gave them the scenario, act like they just called us to start a brand-new school district. So we told them, basically, they had no money, that, um, if they would go back to their departments, staff, look at their staffing, look at their programs, look at what we can are currently doing, and then bring back to us a budget that starts at zero dollars. Because that way, they need to come back to us and tell us what they feel like they need to be successful. Because we know that we've been successful in this district because of all the staffing we've put out in the schools with the aides and some of the other mentors and those types of things out there. So we've asked district staff first to bring us their budget before we head out in the schools and...
And who did you, who did you present this to?
Every district administrator.
Any resignations?
No. You know what, they'll come through, and that's, and, you know, we met with Marilyn yesterday, and that's when she was talking about, you know, maybe, um, consolidate bus routes based on the number of kids and those kind of things. And we told them, too, remember, we've got four hundred less kids, two thousand less kids than we did several years ago, and some of our staffing looks the same.
So if you divide twenty-five into four hundred students, that's sixteen teachers, that's eight hundred thousand dollars.
That's about a figure, too.
Not much.
There'll probably be a few more teachers than that, I would assume.
I'll tell you, definitely, we're going to have a conversation with high schools on, or, I mean, we've looked at several of the master schedules from all three high schools, and some of our AP courses are showing up with five and six kids in the second semester.
We need to webcast.
And we told them all that, number one, they need to recruit more kids in the program. They tell those AP teachers to quit running kids out of their programs, and that specific courses will be taught by one teacher, and then we'll web it out to the rest of other schools. So they're looking at those types of things also. Now, what we have to take, um, staff yet for are level-one kids, because they're still waiting on test results, because, you know, we're dictated by law to put all those kids in special classes. So, you know, what we may be able to save here, which may cost us some more on the other side.
Lord give and tell, has he taken away?
So as I mentioned earlier, you know, we're looking at the current budget, determining end of the year needs. Every dollar saved this year helps for next year. We need to look at consideration for the Duke withholding. We hope it gets some finality. I don't know if we will or not. If we have any other FTE lost, and we need to build the fund balance back up. I mean, we need to build up for the rainy day again that we've suffered the last few years.
Maybe we need to run a full-page ad in the newspaper recruiting students like some other of the private schools.
Funny you mention that. I, um, spoke to the Education Foundation the other day, and we're all just wanting to come up with an ad for us.
Really?
And that they will help find it. They'll help find the whole thing.
And you're right, there has been one school particular that's been running a full-page ad about once a week.
Every week.
And you know, it doesn't say all those students?
And this is kind of the calendar of events that we're going through. Once again, uh, like tomorrow, we'll meet with capital budgets, uh, the next week, we'll have the schools, et cetera. We meet with the district budget departments later on next month, so we'll start continuing to, uh, meet the mandate of the calendar, billing the budget, and reporting back to the board at workshops. What's not in here, there's no workshop for March, and I, personally, I think we need to have another workshop before April on the budget, but, uh, we'll let you all discuss that.
I, I can't recall. Uh, I guess the reason we didn't have it was because of spring break.
And you and I are out of town.
What about after spring break? What about after spring break?
But if you all will let me work with Thomas, because I'm planning to go on a date when the board members are here and gone, they would come up with a date and you would send it out.
And then we could also coordinate, pat the students, the.
Well, that was going to May.
Yeah.
Oh, that's May.
So maybe we'll look at dates and then send them out email.
Yeah.
Well, we're having a workshop before our meeting in March. How long of a workshop do you anticipate, how much time do you anticipate?
It's really entirely up to you all. I mean, we, we've had these discussions for the last several years on ideas, thoughts, concerns, areas to reduce. We certainly have other ideas, and a lot of them may be the same ideas, but we'll come to reason again, I mean, I think it's kind of up to the direction you all give us.
But by the 11th of, of March, I don't know that you're going to have a whole lot to come back to us with.
Or have an approved budget from the state.
No, but we certainly know where the direction we need to go.
We might have a few things that we could bring, that, yeah, we might have a few things.
And certainly today, discussion as to what things that you want us to look at, analyze, bring back to you, maybe for some areas to reduce. You know, we've had several of these conversations over the past four years on areas to go to. We've had a budget committee that came up with a bunch of ideas. We've come up with a bunch of ideas. We just, this is the year that we have to execute.
You know, if we're getting the same BSA as we got in 2004, maybe we need to look at our 2004 staffing plan. See how we've expanded it over the years. We may have to just retract back to this appropriate funding. We keep adding and adding and adding. But when we have the money, it's hard to take away.
Thoughts, conversation?
I think, you know, the challenge that, that as a board, what we have is, is we've set forth the goals that we need to accomplish for our students. We, we're looking for, you know, the, for you all to provide us then with some of those solutions, to say, what, you know, where do you see that we can get that money? And we've, you know, in the past, when we've, we've gone out to, and we've had the budget committees, there's a lot of things that we've said, truly, those are not things, though, that meet the objectives of the board and didn't entirely add up to a whole lot. You know, saving $10,000 here, $20,000 there, $30,000 there, it still might add up to $100,000, but it's nowhere close to 3.6 million. Board members?
I'm just, I'm like constantly in this fix. I mean, I really don't understand it.
Well, if we could control, but we're able to control the money and taxes and everything, we wouldn't be in this fix, but we're given things and told to.
Well, there's been several reasons. We've, we had reduced FTE, reduced funding.
Yeah.
And we've used a fund balance, so we've.
But one thing, too, that if you go back to, for example, and I was, and I've written about this recently, in 2004, we had a lot less mandates, too. We had a lot less obligations. We did not have classroom size at the classroom level that we had to do. We did not have the amount of testing requirements, the VAM requirements, all of those pieces, and that's just the ones that are coming to mind off the top of my head, that are adding to the cost of education of our students. And at the same time, telling us, we must be successful with them. There is no opportunity of failure. None of us want to fail our students. But at the same time, we are penalized, and by the dollar, by the continual mandates. The, I'm sorry, but one of the issues that I have is, you know, the intrusion of government has not simply been at the federal side. We have had, from the state, the abundance of cost-adding measures put onto us. They, they operate every day with the premise that small business and business needs to be able to be provided flexibility and deregulation in order to operate more smoothly and more effectively in business. Well, they've taken the exact opposite approach when it comes to public schools. They have put more requirements on us, more mandates on us, and added the cost level. So it's not even simply that we had more money in 2006 per student. It costs a lot less to, to fund a student than it does today.
Yeah, you didn't have all the remediation, all the graduation requirements, end-of-course exams. I mean, there's so much more that we have that we have to deal with. You know, juggling the class-size amendment is a nightmare when we start the school year off. Now, some school districts have just said they're not going to abide by the class size. That's an option. I mean, and we have spoke about that before, but I know that's certainly a constitutional.
Then how much would it cost you to hire the teachers?
And also, remember, a lot of school districts have eliminated a lot of things that we've not eliminated at all. You know, some school districts eliminated their, I think media specialists in the elementary world, some of them eliminated a lot of their physical education teachers. They've gotten into the arts programs, and they don't fund a lot of things out in schools, and we've not opted to do that. And, and those are, because every school district's been in the same boat we're in. It's just they've opted to eliminate a lot of those things that we've not done.
And interestingly, their standardized scores have tended to drop as a result of that.
And, you know, they don't have the aides out in classrooms that we've, you know, so graciously given to our teachers, because we felt like it was important, it was best for our kids, and you know, as well as I do, when we start making those cuts, we're going to see a difference in our test scores, because we've been able to give more individualized instruction, more group instruction, and those kind of things.
If we did not make classroom size, if we made it based on a school average, like charter schools, by the way, are, are allowed to operate. At this point, it's my understanding that, I mean, we would, I guess, not be able to get high-performing status because you have to make classroom size amendment?
That is one of the requirements.
On the other hand, if the legislature does away with all the advantages of being a high-performing district, then maybe that's something we have to, we have to consider. And I guess the, the question would be, how much money is that?
We would have to do the analysis and see what that is, if you want me to do it.
Well, this is one board member. So I, I am just saying that that's something.
There's more.
The other thing.
And I would agree to look at that with an idea that we set our own class size amendment.
No, no, I, I, and I agree with that. I'm not saying that we're not still meeting the spirit of it.
Because I'm not giving the kids an apple one way.
But I think he said, school average.
No, I'm saying a school average, yes, school average.
So that would still set a cap.
It would still set a cap. It still would mean that there's going to be classrooms that, as we did before, are under the amendment, but one might be one or two over, because we staffed it based on maybe what those students suffer, and not simply by a number.
Let me tell you, that's a lot easier to give a teacher 19 kids than to move that teacher to another school, because.
Absolutely.
You've got to figure things out and stuff, so.
So.
We have to do a lot of multi-level, too, to accommodate.
Well, I appreciate the board as a whole thinking it's at least worth looking at. I think that's the, the conversation to have.
It is.
And I think all the board members need to go back again to their schools that they're on SAT committees with and discuss with them, you know, what, what is it that you could do to, to help us in the reduction process?
Big sales.
Big sales, lottery tickets and all that.
I mean, you know, and, and, but Ms. Powers, it does bring up a point, because I do think people, I, I can tell you, going to some of the SATs, those PTAs, those PTOs, they are funding a lot of programs that both the school district as well as the state used to fund. Things that, you know, that they really are, have stepped up to the plate, and I, I thank them, because if it wasn't for their efforts, we wouldn't have still certain programs in our schools. And I, the community effort that they do, and, and certainly, we see it easier at the elementary, because they're still a little, much more organized. But it goes all the way up to the high school levels. It's just sometimes in different forms there.
I think you're right. We have such community support. I know when I go out and we need something for a program that's happening in schools, you don't have enough supplies, I can go out and ask someone at a store, and they'll jump in and give them $50, $100 in, in products or cash to the school to help them. So I have a lot of support that way, but we can't go out all the time and ask everybody to come up with either kind of money.
While we're on the subject of money, are we going to go after the 2.5?
Point two-five.
Point two, that's what it is, 2.25. I like 2.5 better.
Oh, yeah, we have to decide before.
We need to.
Well, and I think it has to go to the county commission prior to that June date, so Wes would have to draft something up.
And why can't we go for 2.5?
Well, the question is, do, do we want to go back out for a operational tax referendum or capital, go back to capital? Because I don't know, because if they ever give us back that ability to vote by supermajority, get back that point for at least maybe not this year, I don't know. 2.5 they stole.
And could we get the Education Foundation to fund the, help fund the, you know, the advertising for that?
Yeah, I mean, the districts that have been successful have had very organized, a very organized message that, that made sure that people understood what it was going to, how it was to be used, and.
And basically, how little it'll be costing you.
Right. And, and that certainly, you know, we are very limited as to what we can do. We can't spend district in taxpayer funds, as we shouldn't be, to sell a tax, you know, investment, as I would say it really is, in our students. The challenge also is, is, you know, is it going to pass? And I know that's what, the challenge, you know, that we have, but that's, that's what still I'm, you know.
And remember, that revenue would hit to the following year.
Right.
Whenever it hits, we'll take it.
It's not going to fix this budget.
Correct. No, no, I agree, but it's just.
I, I guess I'm still struggling with this teacher salary allocation, if the minimum rate is $2.4 million. But it's in here as a positive in our allocation. So why is it?
The, the net growth in the FFP is 400,000, 425, whatever it is. Within that is 2.4 million for salary allocation, so we have to expense that. So to be able to expense that, we got to make sure we have revenue to cover that.
I know that, but I guess I asked this earlier, and I didn't get an answer that makes sense to me. We have built into our budget the step raises.
We have, in the past, built in, we do plan it every year, but we got to be able to fund it. We've been funding it over the past few years out of fund balance, because we haven't made the reductions necessary to accommodate the reduced, the reduction in revenue.
And, okay. 100% of that money has to go to salary, our kitchen.
Right.
You can't use it to pay for teachers.
It has to go for salary allocation, just like this year. It was to go for strictly salary enhancements for teachers or any negotiated settlement with your unions.
And if you don't have the money to do it?
Well, they're going to tell you, you got the money to do it, and you need to make the other decisions to be able to accommodate it.
Yeah, they're running the system. They're running the system, we're running the system.
Well, that's certainly something to discuss, and y'all have always talked about is, you know, we're getting mandates from the state, and why don't they let us make those decisions?
Well, is that replacing money that we would have gotten for general purposes?
Well, that's debatable. I mean, you know, that was what the governor came up with last year, and said he'd give us all this money to education, which if you really.
Yeah, we get no.
I mean, you remember, he gave us an extra $4 million, but two and a half of it was for salary enhancements. Another 1.5 or so was for FRS increases, so we didn't get any new money last year, although it sounded good.
And you're right, things like that have to be fully explained, because if someone goes out and asks for more money, like, than 0.25, then reasonably, a person would say, no, I'm not going to give you any more money. But then, you're happy with all this money that came down from Tallahassee. Well, yes, but they put in specific categories, you can't use it for anything else, so you don't have it at all.
It's restricted. And that's what we've always asked, just give us the pot of money and allow us to be able to manage it. But through issues from other areas or districts, they certainly mandate on how they want you to spend it through the legislative process.
And we tend to follow the law and follow what the, what we're supposed to follow. Other districts decide, I can't do it.
And just to give you, and I don't know if this is exactly it, but if you were to take the, it looks like the 2, 2.4 million, and you divide it by the number of students, the allocation is, there's about $170 of BSA that's going just for the governor's, you know, mandate.
And it gives an increase of 100, so there you go.
So.
I mean, that, that to me is, that's the answer right there. That, you know, that they, they're mandating it to us, but they're giving us less to actually accomplish it. So.
So, direction. I got a couple of things that we're back to work on, it sounds like, but are we coming back at the March board meeting and discussing anything, or?
Board members, we can, what we can do is, we could modify our conversation that we're going to have our boardsmanship workshop that we're going to have at 11. We can, we could change that to an earlier time and then come back down here for budget.
I think we had it at 11, because I think Ms. Dufford had a.
Oh, she's got.
Value adjustment board.
We're coming in on the 10th. How long should that last?
No one knows.
Okay.
Could last till 11.
Could we come in before that? That already is going to be here at 10 o'clock for that.
What time do you want to come in, 7:30?
Yeah.
I could have it at 5:30 in the morning.
I will not be after 5:30.
11 o'clock. So could we be here at 9? Or could we stay active?
I don't care. We have to advertise it, so that's a problem. What, what day was that, the 11th?
March 10.
We already have the hearing, I believe, at 10 that day.
I've got it at 11 on my schedule.
You're right.
Is there, is there any reason that we couldn't, I, I know the hearing could go on longer, but can we schedule a workshop for 1:30? And then it's not time certain, though? Does a workshop have to be time certain?
I think any meeting, we have, we have to say, advertise what it's going to start.
Okay.
You could do this, if you wanted to start at 9 or 10 that morning, you could recess it for the Beth Stone hearing if you're not done. And then you could just open it back up after Beth Stone.
Oh, start it at 9, and then, oh, that would work for me.
That's on the 10th we're talking about.
Mm-hmm. You could do something like that.
Just so you know, we might be here till 8 o'clock tonight.
Really?
And then Stone is, is scheduled 11?
Well, and then if this, if the Stone hearing goes forever, you, we can schedule it for another day. You can just close it. Give it a 9 o'clock, 9. I don't know how long that's going to be. So we'll come in 9 o'clock on the 10th, is that the consensus? Hello?
Yes, yes.
What is it, I'm sorry?
We're coming at 9 o'clock on the 10th.
That's where I think we're, is that, Mr. Trump, you look, okay. So if we can advertise for 9 o'clock, we'll go to 9:55 recess. If we haven't finished, we'll recess.
We need to go to 10:45.
Oh, 10:45, I'm sorry. Oh, oh, we may be able to get it all done. We might get it all done. Okay. I think that's good.
Yeah, and meanwhile, let's discuss with our SAT committees any suggestions that they might have, too.
Well, I think the first thing we need is, we need to have a very definitive number on staff reduction, reduction of FTE, not just instructional, but non-instructional.
I can have that all for you.
Yeah, so we need to have all of that, and we need to look back at 2004 and see what was our staffing plan. I'd like to see that.
We have to go back and see. The destruction of staff would be hard to take from the base right now until we know what. We can just make some assumptions. We can make some assumptions, but I want to make sure you know that that's what they are. The staffing plans might have been purged already.
I think that's down somewhere. What you say in our budget?
So they might have been purged already.
Very funny.
So Thomas, what were you saying about the 11th? What time were we coming in on the 11th?
11.
11 on the 11th?
March 11th?
Mm-hmm.
And why, why are we doing that? Because we're having a workshop.
We're having a boardsmanship workshop.
Thank you.
And you were also, whatever happened to our zero tolerance and our Renaissance and all that?
They got April. They got April. It got, moved to April, because we were, we got some ideas, and then they were also giving us some.
It didn't sound like Renaissance had everything ready for prime time.
Yeah, they wanted a little bit more data to bring it on.
So April Renaissance is going to do.
I think that's, that's it, Mr. Blocker. Board, just the other thing. Is there anything you have for Mr. Blocker?
Oh, just like, we were talking about video classes in the high schools, where we had five students in a class, AP class. We're looking at that also, Mr. Blocker.
That's certainly some we're looking, because some of those AP classes only have a couple, so we're looking at maybe concentrating the effort on a web type of system.
Webcast, okay. So you might bring some figures on that.
We'll, we'll look at current class sizes.
I just want to say, I spoke to Mr. Branchaw, I'm sure you all did, about reviewing the record on Ms. Stone's case. And Linda, you said, do you have it there, how big it is? Okay, we're required to read that all before the meeting on the 10th. So, Mr. Kennedy, did you want to read it electronically?
Can we? Because I would much prefer it, because.
I have it electronically. You do?
Then, yes, we can instruct for you to.
The message is broken into five different sections.
Let's phone it, it'll be better.
So you're going to email it to us, if that's what you prefer?
Well, how else would you get it to us electronically?
Well, I guess I'm asking if you want it electronically or a copy.
I, I would prefer electronic, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
And I, well, because my computer is now up, so.
I have three.
Yes, electronic.
Thank you. We, the calendar committee met recently, and as Mr. Simon would say, we have a pair of bookends. We have, that the committee came up with a beginning date and an ending date for school. Mr. Simon, if you want, we, we're, we're short on time. So if you want to just give us those bookends real quick.
And before you hand that, I want to tell them something we had a discussion yesterday with Mr. Clark and I, I think he shared, Mr. Simon was out yesterday. When you look at your calendar, it was kind of blinding, all those half-blue days, okay, those half-days that were marked in blue. Because not on this calendar are the half days that we put, now it's called professional development. So we met yesterday and we're going to talk to our staff about at the end of nine weeks, if they can survive with one half day. Okay, rather than the two half days at the end of nine weeks. All right?
So what happened was, the committee knows, and I am very blessed to be in a district where people really want to serve students first and foremost and everything else is, everything else is secondary. So the committee said, we're going to build a calendar that serves our students regardless. And it's all students. And while it cannot be all to, everything to all, we're going to strive to do our best. They realize the state of Florida is still not determined a state test. So the decision was to try to take last, this past year's calendar and actually lay it on top of the dates for next year. So the beginning and ends will be comparable. They recognize the fact that test dates aren't here, so it's easier to do the first half of the year than the second half of the year. They also recognize that if you look at the first date for teachers, that July 31st has an emotional thing to it. However, to serve students best, that would be the right start date for students to begin and always wanting to begin the middle of the week because that leads to greater transition. The student's first day is the 6th. Some shifts that have occurred, the committee felt strongly that schools, when it comes to deciding if there are four days before the beginning of school for staff, which are teacher workday, which are professional development, that will be a school's decision based on the needs of the school. So again, that transfers when we decide what is best and how we differentiate for students, we also do the same for schools. So the first half of the year, again, ends with the Thanksgiving, Christmas holidays in December. So that's the 18th, 19th. The second half of the year, second term begins January 5th and 6th, the professional development day. Just typically that's been for our entire staff, but it can adjust accordingly. And the 7th is the first day back for students. In that second half of the year, while FTE is coded in green and all these explanations are below, holidays are also noted in purple. There is no spring break defined because that's going to be based on when test schedule is in place. And the last day of school for students will be May 22nd. And the last day for staff, May 27th. So with again, beginning, teachers begin the 31st of July, students begin Wednesday, August 6th. Term ends right before the 22nd of December, first term, second term. Students come back on the 7th. Last day is the 22nd. And you see the last day for teachers.
And Mr. Simon, to share with the board, this is pretty much an exact near overlay of the current year. The only difference is, is of course, we started, the days and the, and how it places the same. It just happens to be that the 31st was actually the first. If you were to start, that's when it would be. So everything shifted one day. But other than that, the days of the week, everything is identical to the way it is. One of the, the, I think exciting things was, there was total togetherness and agreement on all sides that the calendar was working, that, that there really, it wasn't that there was more than one choice. This was the best choice with all of the pieces that had to be put together. And Mr. Simon did a great job at facilitating that meeting. But it was clear that everyone was in agreement in the direction that it was going. There was a very, I mean, they were so minor, but the difference is, it was like, could we have school-based decision on the first few days? That was, I think that was the biggest outline, you know, issue. But other than that, it was, it was clarity together, so.
Hey, thanks for representing the board and the community, Mr. Kennedy. So here's what's next. So what's next, this frames this calendar, the two or three choices that are going to come to the staff for a vote are already defined. And we recognize this is very different. So we have established the first day and the last days. So those will not be changed unless something dramatic occurs from the Department of Education. We want to make sure you are recognizing, would recognize that distinct difference. And the bargaining units agreed strongly that this is the right thing to do. So while it does not follow the protocol of past calendar schedules, this is, at this year, the best decision made. The other decision made was that we will meet in March, once the state board meets and develop those two schedules and have a rapid process of having them out to schools. The committee even decided, you know, they asked the question, how do we inform schools and school calendar representatives of the rationale and the shifts and the changes that occurred for this one year? So they've already farmed themselves out to be matched and married to schools to present and explain why these changes occurred and what it means for students and staff. So ultimately, coming to you in March will be their recommendations for the two to three calendars. It will go off for vote and then back to you in May for formal approval. It is noted also that it's the board's decision to decide the six paid holidays. And again, Ms. Doris has always guided that, but that is your decision once this calendar is established, which, which are the official paid holidays.
And those were pretty much, the recommendation from the committee was to balance those so that in each half of the year, that there was the same number so that the salaries match. Because otherwise, the days, they still had days off, they just were non-paid days. Any questions before we let Mr. Simon?
Thanks.
Board members, the only, the other thing that I had was for the March 11th boardsmanship conversation. I did contact Florida School Board Association and got Andre to send me some things of some recent classes that I had taken and also some ones that we've done. So I thought I would send out some of those questionnaires, particularly not all of them, but just the pieces that I think are relevant to some of the conversations that have been, that we've been having so that we could help lead that. There were some very cute, comical, but very well-done snippet videos that I thought I'd pick a couple out that we look at that talk about proper behavior of board members and things that we do. And they're actually quite funny. It, but, and, and those are some good, so I'll, I'll show one or two of those. But I did put together some of that so that we can, and there's some things that have come up where we'll be able to, I think, probably have some further conversation with our board members. If there's anything that you would like to see added onto that, I'm going to, I'm going to probably put together something for Ms. Verarami to get out to you all. But if there's something after you see that too, you want to see that we include.
What I'll do is, I'll try to type up the notes that I took from the last two sessions in that, in that, whatever format I got. And we'll have everything at least in front of us except for that last page. It's still blank.
Okay, excellent. And what I did is I pulled, I asked for the PowerPoints and stuff that are those, the ones that we have. That basically, it's Florida School Board Association has just made it a little reader-friendly, but it is the state statute. What board members do and what Ms. Hemel does.
You're not bringing that vote anymore, are you?
No. Please, that was too funny. That was so funny. Is there anything else that, that we needed?
One question, going upstairs, or we want Mr. Gettys to bring the video piece upstairs? Or are you okay not?
I thought we would just have a conversation unless there's, you all have different, so I think no.
What about recording equipment?
She always has to have that.
Yeah.
We'd be able to, I think we have.
Yeah, we have a.
A portable thing or something. Okay. Okay, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned. Thank you, board members.